This meeting is called to order. This is a public hearing meeting, the Bonner County zoning commission. The time is five thirty P M. The date is August seventeenth. Two thousand twenty-three. The location is the first floor. Conference room in the Bonner County administration building on highway two hundred Sandpoint Idaho planet earth. The meeting is being recorded and streamed live via Zoom and YouTube. If you like what you see here, please hit the like button. And if you don't want to miss future episodes, go ahead and subscribe. All right. All right. We ask you all now to please silence any pagers, phones, electronic devices. Please all stand for the pledge allegiance of the flag. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Seated. Let's have a roll call of the commissioners, starting from my left.
Commissioner Jake Weimer, present.
Commissioner Webster.
Commissioner Clark.
Commissioner Wakeley.
All right. Is there anyone in attendance that needs special assistance to see, hear, or participate in these proceedings? Okay. Um, we're gonna go to any changes in the agenda. Commissioners or staff members, are there any changes to this agenda?
No.
No. All right, I would ask the staff or the commissioners, the minutes from our last meeting held on, was it July seventeen? Or July twentieth, two thousand twenty-three were made available for the commission to review. Do any commissioners or staff members care to address or correct those minutes?
No.
No. Okay, the minutes are approved under the consent agenda. File hearing introduction. For those who may not be familiar with these public hearings, I'll introduce the process to everybody. Zoning commissioners are myself and the gentleman my left and right. We are volunteers. We serve on this commission because we live here in Bonner County. We love Bonner County. We have friends and family here. Our job is to be objective as we review these applications having to do with zoning and land use. We are not employees by the county. We are not politically elected and we are not paid for our service. We do our best with support of the professionals of Bonner County Planning Department. And other county and state departments to review these applications. The zoning commission are a quasi judicial body. This is meaning that we don't make the rules. We simply follow the rules. This is in contrast to the planning commission, who are a quasi legislative body, meaning that they make many of the rules that we follow here. All right, the staff are the people here on my left. They are staff members of the Bonner County Planning Department. They are paid employees of the county and subject matter experts in the area of zoning and planning. Permitting and they spend countless hours with professionals and do it yourselfers. Plan proper to properly plan projects affecting land use in the area. They act as filters, ensuring that what comes before this body has been well prepared. Indeed, there are many applications and requests that never make it to see these public hearings because the proposals are simply incompatible with county code. The public, who is present here tonight. The commission solicits public testimony that helps the commission to learn more about the facts relevant to these files. Facts that may not have been known to the applicant or their representatives or the planning department staff. So we accept public testimony in written form before these hearings, and we heard from many of you. And we love written testimony because what it does is it allows us time before this meeting to prepare and better understand. Policies, things happening around that area pertaining to this file hearing. So the file hearing procedure. We have one to review tonight, an application. What is this? For Providence subdivision. The procedure for hearing a file is as following. The staff will present a staff report goes over all of their findings. From the rostrum on my left, the applicant and their representative will be allowed to present the an overview of the project again from the rostrum. The commission may ask questions of the staff and applicant normally at the end of their presentation. The commission opens up for public hearing and public testimony, and I'll explain their rules of public testimony here in a little bit. The applicant and staff will have the opportunity to review new information presented in public testimony and answer any questions. Finally, the commission will close. Public testimony will deliberate and then perhaps vote. For each file, if a recess is needed, I will directly, like we might take a recess in this file, depending on the time. And then we'll have fifteen, ten, fifteen minutes to eat, drink, make phone calls, use restroom, whatever is needed. And I'll let you know when the hearing will resume. The first file that we're gonna hear tonight is going to be. Project name Providence subdivision, file number S zero 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 two dash two three subdivision. The applicant is requesting to plot approximately thirty-nine point five seven acres of unplanted parcel into one hundred and sixteen residential lots ranging from. Point two four acres to point four four three acres and four tracks proposed to be reserved for stormwater management. Purpose in a green belt. The site is zones suburban and land use is designated as urban. For the public's benefits, the commission, oh, and then. Does the commissioner have any expert, do the commissioners have any ex parte communication or conflict interest to disclose regarding this file?
No. No.
I know most of you or many of you on either side, but it will not affect my decision or ability to vote on this case. All right, staff, please present the file. So funny.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening, members of the public. We are here for the for the for the hearing of the subdivision filed Providence subdivision. Oh, I'm sorry. I just lost connection to the internet.
All right, that adjourns the meeting for now. Thank you all for coming.
Right.
Darn internet.
Now, this doesn't amplify the voice. It's just for recording purposes. Oh, it does?
Yeah.
My bad. I'll try to be louder. Okay, like I said before, this is a hearing for the for the subdivision filed Providence subdivision. I'll now discuss the project intent. Of this project. So through this project, the applicant is requesting to plot an unplatted piece of parcel that is thirty-nine point five seven acres in size. And zone suburban with a land use designation of urban into hundred and sixteen residential lots. With some non-residential utility tracts that will be used for stormwater management purposes and for a green belt. The updated preliminary plat for this project was submitted on July nineteen twenty twenty-three in order to address the concerns that were brought forward in the. In the previous public hearing of the hearing examiner on July five twenty twenty-three. So this is a view of of the north part of the plat that was submitted for review to Bonner County. This is a view of the south part of the plat. This project was sent to all these agencies for their review. Of the agencies that were notified of this request, we received comments from Bonner County Road and Bridge Department. Idaho Transportation Department, Idaho Department of Water Resources, Northside Fire District, City of Bootney, and Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. Other than these, no other agencies responded about responded for this request. We received several public comments regarding this file. The major themes in those public comments were these as listed on the screen here. Destruction of wetlands could affect it could adversely affect in drainage of homes and housing developments around the site. Wetlands on the subject property currently serve as drainage for Seven Sisters Development. Diminished quality of life for homes built around Seven Sisters Development, especially those bordering the wetlands. Removal of trees from site does not address how housing shortage devalues Seven Sisters Development. Development has no feasible areas for snow removal, increase in traffic and accidents. Current road infrastructure not designed for a development of this size and magnitude. Putney Elementary School at capacity, no educational support to house children requiring education. Putney sewer at capacity, development will put a stress on the already burdened system. Concerns regarding proposed drainage system being able to handle runoff without impacting the residents on the west side of Providence. Property within wetlands and flood plains. Concerns about the file being heard by the hearing examiner and not the zoning commission. The development should follow city of Putney's planning regulations. So this site is located within the area of city impacted food knee. It borders city of food knee, the shaded area here. Let's see if I can point it out. So the shaded area here is city of food knee and the highlighted line that you see here is the area of city impact of food knee. The parcel highlighted in blue is the sighting question. Taking a closer look at the site, it is, it it's located, it has a direct frontage on Providence Road, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained public right of way. It is also adjacent to highway two hundred owned by Idaho Transportation of Department. The property is currently vacant. It is unplatted. It is approximately thirty-nine point five seven acres in size. Has a zoning of suburban and has a land use designation of urban. There are no steep slopes present on the side. It does contain some map wetlands. It does not contain any map water bodies, streams, lakes or rivers. The soils are classified as prime farmland if drained. Parcel is located within flood hazard zone X. It does not contain any floodway. There are no local state or federal agencies that have identified any critical wildlife habitats on or within the vicinity of the subject property. So reviewing the request again, the applicant is requesting to create hundred and sixteen residential lots. With a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet or more as permitted in the suburban zone by Bonner County devised court. The existing of proposed services to the project will be through city of Sandpoint for water. Putney Pondre Sewer District for sewer services, Avista Utilities for power, Northside Fire District for fire services. Lake Pondre School District eighty-four, Bonne County Ambulance District and Fondre Hospital District. We have gone through the site location and surroundings and the project intent, so I will move on to the other things related to the project. So the applicant says that the that the services for water will be provided by city of Sandpoint. We have received a will serve letter from the city dated August twenty-two twenty twenty-two. The letter is titled a will serve confirmation Providence project. Parcel number, location. The letter states that the city of Sandpoint has the ability to provide water for the subject properties within the city of Sandpoint Water Service Area. Upon approval of engineered plans, proof of a valid building and plumbing permit. Payment of applicable fees and completion of approved water infrastructure improvements service will be provided. In addition to the to well, in addition, we also received a letter from Idaho Department of Water Resources. The agency states that the project will be served by city of Sandpoint Water and we have no concerns about the project. For sewer services, a will serve letter was provided by Putney Pondre Sewer District on June twenty-three twenty twenty-three. The letter states above mentioned property is within the boundaries of Putney Pondre Sewer District. The property has insufficient capacity reserved for the proposed project and no new user facility has been purchased as of today's date. An application for service would need to be completed and appropriate. User facility fees would have to be purchased. Availability of service is neither promised nor guaranteed if not purchased. The letter further states, after all the requirements of the district have been met, including not limited to payment of all fees. Completion of a sewer main extension. Of the district satisfaction, applications of service of. As well as supplemental of sewer utility plants, the district will provide service to the property. Roads and access, as discussed previously, the site does run on a public, on a on a Bonner County owned and maintained public road, that is Providence Road. Bonne County Road and Bridge Department reviewed the request, reviewed the project. And the agency responded with comments on July thirteen, updated comments on July thirteen twenty twenty-three. The agency states that they have received the traffic impact study. And they make several comments regarding the left turn lane on highway two hundred encroachment permits permits for driveways. Road approach permits, improvements to Providence Road, construction of new roads within the subdivision. To privately maintain public road standards of Bonner County. Installation of road signs and road lanes, dedication of additional right of way along Providence Road. The importance of sixty feet utility ingress egress easement across block four, lot sixteen to preserve emergency access. Provision of an alternate access to the subdivision through firestone lane in case the access to Seven Sisters Drive is not granted by city of Putney. Updating road names, location of fire hydrants with snow location poles to be marked on plans. And the roads to be developed to the Bonner County revised court standards for privately maintained public roads. The project was reviewed by Idaho Transportation Department as well, and the agency replied with the following comment. Applicant will need to will need to apply to make upgrades to state highway two hundred with Idaho Transportation Department. Please include the approach plans for S H two hundred and the warranted left turn lane in the traffic impact study. Including striping plans and tapers. Also, in the application, please include the traffic impact study and trip generation report. Applicant can apply at the given location. And we are back. So in terms of fire safety. The application narrative states, a portion of the site has already been logged. Most of any remaining trees will be removed during clearing and grabbing operations associated with the site development. This will create a sensible space around future home sites. The subdivision is proposed to be served by city of Sandpoint Water System, complete with fire hydrants. Capable of delivering fire flows as prescribed in the International Fire Board. The project proposes a sixty feet wide emergency access through a utility and ingress egress easement across. Lot sixteen block four. The project also proposes a twenty feet wide pub, twenty feet wide public utility fire access easement on lot eleven of block four. Those easements can be seen on the plat here. So the one on the top here. That's a sixty-five, sixty feet wide easement, ingress egress easement, and this one is a twenty feet wide ingress egress emergency easement. Fire safety. So this plaque was sent to Northside Fire District for review and approval of the emergency fire access plans for the subdivision. The fire district has reviewed the updated plat and the district replied with the following comments on August first twenty twenty-three. We are satisfied with the additional fire access easement entering the subdivision off of Seven Sisters Drive. This is depicted on the plat map as note seventeen, a twenty-five feet wide public utility easement and fire access easement. If this access is not approved by the city of Putney, we will require another emergency fire access easement to be established. The applicant anticipates submitting submitting an application for right of way encroachment for backward installation to. City of Putney for the dedicated fire apparatus access soon. You have already watched. So we received a comment from city of Putney on August seventeenth twenty twenty-three. The city agrees. With the fire district that an alternative access point for emergencies is necessary. However, the city opposes access through the city streets because of the lack of funding from the development. To support maintenance and improvements to the Seven Sisters subdivision and the traffic impacts to these local serving streets. The city requests the emergency access to be through the firestone lane connections as proposed by Bonne County Road and Bridge Department. For stormwater management and erosion control. The plans were submitted by the applicant on May five. Were submitted by the applicant that were dated May five twenty twenty-three and they were prepared by an Idaho licensed professional engineer. As part of the application. The plan includes the following, a study of the existing site connections. The proposed improvements, a study of site soils, rainfall, proposed stormwater management and erosion control plan along with the construction schedule. And erosion control plan. The plan states residential lots will be graded to slope towards the new internal public roadways. Runoff generated from lots and new roadway surfaces will be conveyed through roadside dishes ditches to stormwater tracks. Runoff along Providence Road currently pawns along the roadway with no discharge location. As part of the Providence subdivision development, Providence Road has been redesigned. With a piped discharge provided through the site, this will help prevent flooding, ponding along the roadway. The exhibits that you see here, the first exhibit is the existing basin map. That shows how the water flows on the site. And the second exhibit on the right is shows developed basin map and showing how the water will flow after the site has been created and prepared for stormwater management. About the wetlands, the national wetland inventory maps. They identify two wetland areas on the property. One is that stream like thing with a yellow color that that's flowing through the middle of the. Parcel and the other one was identified on the on the west side of the parcel, west corner. So according to the Bonner County revised code. If a project shows or a parcel shows presence of wetlands according to the national national wetland inventory. The applicant is required to get a wetland delineation for the project to proceed. And that is what the applicant did along with this application. They submitted a wetland delineation study prepared by Kegel Environment Group. They are specialists in the state of Idaho. So this slide shows the exhibit on the right, which shows sample points for the study that were taken during the wetland delineation study. It shows about twenty-three points on the side. Only one of them was identified to have some sort of a wetland area which was point seven. That shows in the green on the west side of the property. The executive summary of the report states, the focus of this report is the identification and delineation of waters of the U S. Including wetlands located within the site. The purpose of this aquatic resources study is to provide the U S Army Corps of Engineers with sufficient detailed information. Necessary to issue an approved jurisdictional determination to the property owner, Providence Road LLC. If potential future activities might necessitate unavoidable impacts. To the regulated areas and approved aquatic resources delineation will also be provide will also provide the landowner. The necessary information to apply for a section four oh four permit. Where impacts to regulated areas cannot be reasonably or practically avoided. The agency performed the wetland delineation in accordance with the Army Corps of Engineer manual from nineteen eighty-seven. And in accordance with the regional supplement to the Corps of Engineers delineation manual, Western Mountains, Valleys and Coast region, version two. The hydrology of the site, like much of Idaho in twenty twenty-two, was affected by an unknown degree. To an unknown degree by below normal precipitation in recent years. Thus, K E carefully considered hydrological data. Considering the drier than normal conditions. To that end, K E excavated sample site soil pits extraordinarily deep. Average of sixty-two inches to uncover any water table within a reasonable depth that might be indicative of a dry season wetland water table. K E did not observe any springs, creeks or wells on the property. It appears that any hydrology on most of the property would be result of accumulated. Snow melt or precipitation, the delineated wetland is separated. From by an upland worm from the irrigated farm field and thus K E believes. That wetland, this wetland to be isolated. However, even if the wetland were a part of a larger wetland that extends into the into that farm field. Aerial photography shows that the wetland is still isolated. Thus, K E requests that this small wetland be found non-jurisdiction. There was also no evidence that the delineated wetland would have a significant effect on the physical, chemical and biological integrity. Of the nearest navigable water. So this is an excerpt from the from the whole report. So this is an excerpt from the, from the whole report, which is, but the report is available for your review. As noted before, the parcel is located within flood zone X. According to Pima, which basically means that the areas, that those are the areas of minimal flooding. And the chance of flooding is zero point two percent. And will chance flood. There would be no further flooding review that would be required on this project. Most of the findings of facts have been discussed in this project during the previous slides. I will briefly touch upon some of the ones that were not specifically discussed or noted in the presentation before. So according to the Bonne County Revised Code twelve dash four one two, the minimum required lot size. Within the suburban zoning district is ten thousand square feet where all urban services are available. Twenty thousand square feet where only urban water. Where only urban sewer is available. One acre where only urban water is available. And two and a half acres where no urban services are available. In this particular project, also all urban services are available. For Bonne County Revised Code twelve dash seven three one, a wetland reconnaissance by a design professional accepted or authorized by Army Corps of Engineers is required. To determine wetland boundaries for all subdivisions containing mapped wetland as determined by the U S Fish and Wildlife Service, National Wetland Inventory Maps. This particular condition was satisfied by the applicant. They did submit a wetland reconnaissance to Army Corps of Engineers for approved jurisdictional determination. The decision on the approved jurisdictional determination is awaited. For Bonne County Revised Code twelve dash seven three two, a professional wetland delineation shall be submitted at the time of. Application for all subdivisions featuring lots containing a wetland based on the. Wetland reconnaissance, this condition has been satisfied by the applicant as well. One of the. This, this particular finding of fact relates to the agreement between Bonne County and City of Kootenay. Where in Bonne County and City of Kootenay, they entered into an agreement through ordinance number two fifty-seven. Recorded with Bonne County in November ten nineteen ninety-four. The ordinance defines the purpose of area of city impact, specifies the factors considered in identifying the area of city impact. Identifies the comprehensive plan that shall apply to the area of city impact. Identify zoning and subdivision ordinances that shall apply within the unincorporated portions of Bonner County. Idaho lying within the area of city impact. It provides for review and comment procedures between jurisdictions, providing for administrative jurisdiction within the area of city impact. And establishes an effective date pursuant to section sixty-seven, sixty-five, twenty-six Idaho code. Section five of this agreement states, the zoning and subdivision ordinances and subsequent amendments there too, as officially adopted by Bonner County Idaho. Shall apply to the unincorporated portion of Bonner County Idaho, lying within the Kootenay area of city impact. These are two new findings of facts that were not included in the staff report, but staff request that these be taken into consideration as the board, as the commission deliberates on this file. Through the submitted road design plans for the project, the applicant is proposing to create five feet wide paved pathways on both sides of the proposed roads to connect all proposed lots in the subdivision. And the last one would be to take a look at Bonne County Revised Code twelve dash six twenty-five, Trail, Trails and Parts. This part of the code states. Part A, point one states. Implementing Bonner County Trails Plan, new subdivision should be integrated with and expand upon. Existing and planned train network for the Bonner County Trails Plan adopted by the Bonner County Board of Commissioners. It is extremely important to note here that Bonner County has not adopted a Bonner County Trails Plan till date. Point B of the, of this ordinance states. Public access parts and facilities. Public access easements for the conveyance of land for public access parts or facilities. May be required for subdivisions that are contiguous to public lands, public streams, lakes, ponds, wetlands or similar areas. For areas designated in a county facilities. Acquisition plan. If so required, the property owner shall be paid a fair market value for the easement or land. Or may qualify for a density bonus as a part of a conservation subdivision, said port. Conditions of approval. Most of the conditions of approval are standard, but I would like to touch upon a few important ones. That are more specific to the project as soon as I get the computer working. So the conditions of approval have not changed since the time the staff report was prepared. So you have those conditions of approval in your staff reports if you would like to review as I, as I talk about them. So condition five states. According to the Bonne County Revised Code twelve dash six two four, all proposed lots less than five acres. Shall have direct frontage and direct access to a public right-of-way. The preliminary road design plans prepared by the Idaho Licensed Engineer were submitted as part of this application that were reviewed by Bonne County Road and Bridge Department as well as Idaho Transportation Department. As I said before, the, the agency has made several comments relating, related to those plans and the applicant would be required to make those improvements prior to proceeding to the recording of the final flat. That particular conditions, condition also includes providing an alternate fire access through the subdivision. The applicant has the option to connect to the subdivision to Seven Sisters Drive if allowed by the City of Kootenay. Or to provide an alternate access to Firestone Lane and improving the road to meet the requirements of the Bonne County Revised Code. The next. Condition, condition number six. It's, it relates to Idaho Transportation Department and their comment regarding the left turn lane. The applicant shall provide a letter from Idaho Transportation Department stating that the applicant has completed and. Completed the required upgrades and we are back on. So this condition basically states that the applicant shall provide a light, letter from Idaho Transportation Department. Stating that the applicant has completed the required upgrades to state highway two hundred and improvements related to required left turn. Not limited to bonding for the improvements with I T D if that is relevant to the agency. Prior to the recording of the final flat. So all the services that we talked about earlier, water, sewer, roads and access, fire safety, stormwater management and erosion control. The applicant is required to provide improvement plans if the, if the preliminary flat is approved by the Board of County Commissioners. They would be required to provide me improvement plans. That show all these services, how they would be laid out on the side, how they, how they would be developed, a, a plan for that. And eventually those services would either have to be put on site before the final flat gets recorded or they would, they would have to bond for it. Which means they would put in one fifty percent of the amount of the cost of improvements. To Bonner County before they can proceed with the project. The wetland delineation study was dated March twenty twenty, March twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. It was prepared by. Wetlands Wildlife and Permitting Specialists in the State of Idaho. It was submitted to Army Corps of Engineers requesting a jurisdictional determination as discussed before. If the wetlands as delineated by the wetland specialists are found to be jurisdictional by the U S Army Corps of Engineers. All future buildings shall maintain a twenty feet setback to the delineated wetlands. In accordance with the Bonne County Revised Code twelve dash seven three three, unless other permits such as section four oh four over which Bonne County has, has no jurisdiction whatsoever. Are obtained from U S Army Corps of Engineers or EPA or any other agency regulating, having jurisdiction over the wetlands in Bonne County. If the agency determines that the delineated wetlands are non-jurisdictional, then the flat may be modified to reflect that decision in accordance with V C R C twelve dash seven three two. Allowing the flat to show wetland delineation based on the wetland reconnaissance by a design professional that has been accepted and authorized by the U S Army Corps of Engineers. As discussed before, the hearing examiner did hear the file in a, in a previous public hearing. She recommended that the zoning commission conduct a public hearing of their own. Based on the extent of public comment and other contested factors in the case which warranted hearing in front of the zoning commission. And that is what we are doing today, having a public hearing with the zoning commission. That concludes my presentation. Does the commission have any questions for me?
Thank you, Smine. I have a question. So I, I'm going through all this information. There was also conditions of approval for the hearing examiner. And I noticed that one of the conditions for the hearing examiner did not appear on this one regarding lot of. Lot sizes and. Definition of. There was three lots that didn't meet the three to one variation.
So as I, as I said, the, the, the applicant submitted an updated flat on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And in that updated flat, they, they addressed some of the concerns that were brought up in the, during examiner's public hearing. And that condition was addressed there. That's why you don't see that condition in the staff board.
Thank you.
Yes, perhaps this is a question better for the applicant, but do we have a timeline on the Army Corps of Engineers' response to jurisdiction on the one one?
We'll wait and ask the applicant.
We'll wait.
Any other questions for me from the commission?
Not yet. So no, we're, no other questions? All right. At this point, we will ask the applicant or the representative if they would care to present from the Rosberg. Please state your name. Present there.
Good afternoon. My name is Gary Shikadans and we're the owners of Providence Road Subdivision. And have with us here today Mike Hammack, who has represented our. Companies with this application from the very beginning, Dan Tadic from H M H Engineering. Mauricio Cargano from the Philly Bar. And I'm going to let these fellows give our presentation. They, they did the earlier one. We're here to answer any questions and appreciate the opportunity to speak to.
Good evening. As Gary mentioned, I'm Dan with H M H Engineering, Dan Tadic. Staffed a very thorough presentation, more sense in repeating a lot of that. I just want to touch on a few maybe bigger themes and maybe practice couple things as well. Our. Revised preliminary flat, there's hundred sixteen lots, those lots. Are laid out in a way that exceeds the Bonner County minimum of ten thousand. In fact, every lot exists ten thousand six hundred and fifty square feet. The Aquatic Resource Donation Port was completed by a third-party expert. They did find that to be non-jurisdictional. That is currently with the core. I think Maurizio will address that matter later. The subdivision roads happen designed to meet Bonner County Road and Bridge standards for publicly owned privately maintained roads. As Swati covered, you're also planning to upgrade, regrade, widen and pave Providence Road from the intersection of two hundred all the way along the entire front edge of this project. That will alleviate some existing drainage issues that the county has been dealing with on, on Providence Road. The applicant is proposing a five-foot asphalt contiguous with the road surface dedicated to bikes and pedestrians. I believe the staff report mentioned both sides. We're finding one side, not both sides of the roadway, like you told us. As Swati mentioned, it is our intent to provide a fire apparatus access road between our developments and the neighboring Seven Sisters subdivision. This would include a locked gate prohibiting general public access. This would only be for emergency vehicles when necessary. We feel that this will benefit both developments, having an alternative route to get emergency vehicles to and from one side. The one development to the other. In our conversations with Northside Fire, they did indicate that they would be open to opening that gate should an emergency situation arise where. Public was not allowed access out of Providence or perhaps the same issue occurred on Seven Sister sites. That would be open to the public and allow access, regular public vehicle access through, so they could. And as Swati mentioned, we are preparing the permit application for the city of Kootenay for that. Roadway over in Richmond. The traffic impact study was completed and did find that a dedicated left turn lane in two hundred is warranted. We shared that report with Bonner County Road and Bridge on, and I T D and we take no issue with the findings of that report and will complete the improvements. The stormwater system was designed in accordance with Bonner County Code. Designed it such that the roadway ditches carry the stormwater to designated swales and ponds, which provide the treatment and storage required under code. As well as improving the existing Providence Road drainage facilities. Regarding utilities, the water system design was modeled by the City of Sandpoint. And they provided a will serve letter, which Swati mentioned here in the presentation. Their analysis indicated that the water system will have sufficient flows to meet max day demand plus the water flow conditions with the development full built out. A sewer main extension agreement has been executed between the owner and Kootenay Pondry Sewer District. We've been collaborating back and forth and we have attended one of the board meetings. The board, as the staff report presented, K P S D will not guarantee service until fees are paid. For the project of this size, that would be roughly a million dollars in using facility fees. The conclusion of the board was that they would provide a dedication of service upon fifty percent fee, fees in this case. And so with the approval of this body, we're fully intending to, to make that happen and submit the sewer plans through K P S D through D B Q for review and approval. And I think that covered all the topics I had, Mike or Maurizio.
Hi, Mike Hammon. So I was, I was hired by Gary to represent him on this and my whole job in this is to help him. Proceed through this meeting, every code and regulation with me, not dodging any of them, not tightening the meaning of them. And providing a nice subdivision for the community. Um we are making improvements that are not required. It's, it's a long process. As we went through it, we had to make some changes, some upgrades and some things different. But um we are doing our best to meet every one of those codes. Um the wetlands guy that we hired is an Idaho resident. Licensed, um works all over the country. He, he knows this, it's what he does. The drainage along Providence will be, it will make a better road base. You won't have much water soaking into the road days. We're, we're gonna pave the road. We're trying to work with every agency, anyone that responded. We're, we're working to meet with it, to work with them and meet whatever requirements they have. So this isn't about anything other than putting in a project that meets all the requirements and try to do a nice job. Make something nice out of the project that is. In the go through that had been dropped by other people, but we have heard the intent of following it through. Making the changes we have to, ending the work.
Mauricio Cerdona, we, that was your log. So we were hired to take a look uh to a specific issues dealing with the development. One is the Seven Sisters Road for the connection that is needed for the subdivision. Our analysis of the existing instruments shows that the Providence Road L C has. Yes, the English and English access to the road plus the road is a public road. Because it was accepted through the plat and subsequent selling of parcels in the subdivision. On the second issue was the wetlands. So there was a recent use, U N, United States Supreme Court decision. Specifically on point that removed the jurisdiction of the federal government over wetlands that are not directly. Adjacent to waters of the United States that are using interstate commerce. Therefore, the Army Corps has decided not to issue any uh determinations of jurisdiction. Until such a time as they give direction from DC. We do not believe that they have the authority to hold that property, private property rights. To determine that they don't have jurisdiction as the law of the land is fairly clear. After the Supreme Court's decision, we are preparing to file a declaratory judgment action in Idaho District Court. And hopefully, the Army Corps has said that they will issue final rules uh September first. But just two days after the announcement was made by the agency, the local representative. Told our client that they don't have an actual date. So one way or the other, we should get a decision on this. Were available to answer any questions.
Staff, do you have any questions for the applicant or their representative issues?
I've got a question. Um have, have either of you or the owner, apparently somebody met with the city of Kootenai.
Please step to the rostrum and answer that.
Yeah, I met with the city.
And, and they were urging you to be annexed to the city.
And I, I, I went, yeah, I, I went to the city. I asked them for reading. I let them know ahead of time what I was coming to the city for. I told them I would be glad to work with them on some type of annexation agreement to annex and after this was signed. For personal reasons, um professional reasons, I prefer to not work in the city.
I have another one. Um we didn't discuss this turn lane. I'm, I'm trying to understand. Where this turn lane is going to be in relationship to the other turn lane that's not too far away. Do you have a diagram that could help me out on that?
That would, that would be for the engineer. Um I don't believe that had that been drawn up yet. No, but, but it will be drawn up. It will be engineered and has to be approved by I T D. So it's something that I T D will agree to once it's done. We're, we're still working on that stuff, but it will. I mean, if it's in there as a condition of, of approval, it will be, it will be.
Yeah, I guess I'm not worried about it being there. I'm just trying to get some sense of how close it is to the other turn lane that goes in. In the subdivision off on the other side. Not too far away, where Seven Sisters comes out across in there.
Yeah, and actually there's a I T D improvement project along that corridor uh through the city of Kootenai next summer, actually. Uh but uh there will be a break between the projects. Uh I don't have. The detail will show you the serials, not the best one for this particular discussion, but. And I don't off the top of my head that turn lane, like you did a kind of a quick preliminary look at it, but. Basically, that roadway will widen out a little bit. The food traffic will be around. And what's existing, probably the outbound lane existing will become the turn lane and the uh. Outbound traffic will veer around that, similar to what they did at the subdivision there along two hundred by the golf course.
Yeah, do you know, uh just to follow, just to help me a little, I'm just trying to get some sense of dimension, how far away the. Outlet of Providence to two hundred and the outlet of Seven Sisters. To the left, the first word right just there.
That's right there, no. About quarter sixteen hundred feet.
Okay.
So we'll pass the quarter mile.
Yeah, yeah, it's just my eye. We're professionals. All right, um I have a quick question in regards to, there was a mention of uh. The applicant had looked at speaking with Northside Fire in regards to a gate across the uh the sixty foot easement on the northwest side. Of the property that would join the Seven Sisters and then I think it's just on the west side there. Um you know, uh. Seems like that would solve some of the city issues or whatnot, but it, it just seems weird to gate legal egress and ingress. Um that thought there would be to appease people that would have wanted access through Seven Sisters and something like that.
Yeah, um according to the plan of Seven Sisters, on the plat, there's an easement that. Brings adjoining landlords, I see, aggressive in utilities. The city is opposed to that, residents are opposed to it. So in trying to work together, this is a solution.
Yeah.
So this is, this is not a non-bond solution. I have a ton of things necessarily around here, but it's, it's really the only purpose of it. From a code standpoint, is it required, actually, emergency shirts, so providing the gate ensures that it's. Primarily uh emergency vehicle, but it also provides a corridor for the pedestrians and schoolchildren going back and forth, so.
All right, any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I guess just thinking about soil types here seems to be pretty poorly drained. A lot of the public comments. Reference that being poorly drained soil types as poorly drained map indicates cottonwoods. Um as far as stormwater management. Um I guess I'm envisioning in March and April, there's going to be actual standing water in these ponds or. I'm not an engineer, so I guess we could.
Yeah.
Just discuss.
Uh that would be the way those uh storm systems are designed and the way Bonner County Code requires, none of the roadside ditches can actually. You counted on the storage for some hours, so we have to provide all the storage for all the public roadways and private property on private property. So the ditches convey the water to the easements, the, the stormwater tracks, the stormwater tracks have to hold the storage. Have to hold a particular volume of storage required by the code.
Okay.
Then it before that one. And so we have to hold back a certain volume of water, just like.
It's like what you see at Lake Home Depot.
Yeah, okay, cause yeah, so right now this site, you know, in certain times of years, holding six inches of water here and there and whatever. And that's so many cubic feet and then that just ends up in three ponds instead of being distributed across the side. Okay.
That's very, I mean, the soils here are saying this everywhere in the Sandpoint area. It's.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, um, Cita, thank you. All right, uh this time we'll, uh we're gonna work on public testimony and. And uh we'll, we'll go over the rules for uh public testimony. Let's you do, uh when you come up to speak, you speak into the microphone at the, you can speak in this microphone here. Uh we ask you to speak loud and clear so that we can all understand you and uh so that people at home are for future. Selves can understand you, we watch online. Um and we'd ask you to state your name, to begin with, state your name. There's a time limit of three minutes per testimony. There's a clock here that you can see it, so it'll start once you start talking, but ask you to respect that three minutes. Um any public testimony may receive an extra three minutes. Thank you. Uh by uh having somebody else appoint them their time. Uh no more for any other person uh who has signed up, um for a total of no more than six minutes for that, that one person. Uh comments may be limited to uh specifics on, or we ask the comments be limited to specifics on this file. If any public testimony agrees with previously shared public testimony, um please show the respect for everybody's time. And simply state that you agree with the previous testimony or another testimony. Um personal or derogatory comments about another person or their position are not allowed. Uh no clapping, cheering, booing, anything like that. We'll keep it, keep it uh dry. Uh remember that this hearing is uh being shared live by the, via the internet. Um so you're being recorded in a public. Forum and uh you know, your kids will get to watch it someday or maybe your grandkids. Um so we'll just go ahead and start the, the procedure is that I'm gonna open up this uh chair to public testimony. Before uh this public hearing, the commissioners uh were provided, did I go in in the right order? Might be, okay, sorry. Um so before this public hearing, the commissioners were provided with um your uh written comments to review. Um regarding this file, if there's any other written statements entered into uh the meeting, we'd ask that they be brought under record now. Um if, is there uh any uh public testimony from anyone uh supporting this? We'd ask now that you could please speak from the rostrum, and I know that you guys, there's a lot of signups here. Um so. Anybody that is in support can come speak from the rostrum and man is your name.
Yeah, my name is Kent Wick. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um and my wife says that if I are given a microphone, I'll be here a lot longer than three minutes. So I took some notes, make it very uh brief and succinct. Just for your edification, I um was part of the development team. They did Seven Sisters. So we created fifty-six lots and pretty proud of our, our development. And when we went through all this process, we. Had to kind of over-engineer everything. We spent years actually mitigating the wetlands and doing some things in. The, we were told uh by all the guiding agencies that, in fact, the property around us would be developed someday. Wouldn't be the end of it. It wouldn't be the last development, so that we had to be cognizant of that and uh. Um you know, move forward. So we did that. Uh what uh what I would say is that uh. We were scared all along that Seven Sisters Drive would um. Be a, a major arterial through the whole subdivision, and that was a pretty scary thing, given the size of the property and back of us. We're pleased that that's not the case. Um anyway, um I know that you will do your job in. Reviewing this, protecting the existing homeowners and yet not stopping all development. Because I believe there's a real strong need for single-family homes. I hope my son can uh afford a home here one of these days. Uh and by the way, I own a home on Seven Sisters Drive. And so uh if that uh is of interest, so. That's why I'm here tonight, kind of provide a little edification on the overall perspective of what we did originally and um. I'll leave it to you gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else that is for the subdivision? Going once? All right, uh anybody online? No hands raised, right? Okay, um so. Is there any pub? Uh is there any public testimony from anybody that is indifferent and would just like to add information on this? All right.
Tessa Vogel, Ruin Jaeger, representatives for the city of Kootenai. Um our mayor is here as well tonight, um but you have our letters. That we presented uh to the planning department. I won't read through them, so we're kind of long, but we will just touch on a few things. The city is still very much open to property being annexed, but what the city would like to see is that happen before any development happened. So that it actually conforms to the city standards, because it's gonna be part of the city. We want it to meet the city standards. Uh the big, the big issue in the room is gonna be Seven Sisters and emergency access. The city is absolutely against having any access to that road. They have another access, I believe it's Firestone. Um the city isn't gonna get any money from the people in the subdivision to take care of that road. Um same thing with their parks. They're wanting it blocked off, for all vehicle access. Um but do want to have some pathways put in there for the schoolchildren that will inevitably use the city's parks, because there are none in this. City subdivision. They don't have any open space or anything like that for them, so we know the city is gonna bear that burden. Uh another one is gonna be, there's no pathways or sidewalks. Uh this is kind of concerning. It's a huge subdivision. Um so there's gonna be children in it. That's inevitable. Uh your county code actually requires it because of the average lot size minimum that you have there. They're all under twelve thousand. So when you have residential lots where the average is under twelve thousand square feet, you have to have sidewalks and pathways. That wasn't brought up. It's shown up blatant in your code. So the city does ask that you make that a condition of approval to actually have. Sidewalks and pathways, not just the five-foot bike pathway for along the road. Let's see here. So those are two main big ones. Um the city just really would like to note that they are aware that they're gonna bear the brunt of a lot of. The traffic coming in, if you do allow Seven Sisters to be one of those access points, um they're already gonna be taking on. Schoolchildren that you saw the school can't take on uh and to their parts. And one last thing is on the city of Kootenai's area of the impact uh certificate for signature. The city requests that the word approval be removed. They're not approving anything. They're just noting that they're in the area of city impact. So that just needs to be updated. If you have any questions for the city.
I have a quick question. Now, I just want to make sure if I'm hearing what I'm hearing. If the city, if this. Subdivision is annexed to the, to the city or let's say later on, it, it's annexed into the city. Does that position change on the access points through Seven Sisters? Because then you would have money. Is it just a money issue directly for the city?
It's not just money, but.
But it is.
That is, uh but yeah, so like if this was part of the city, just like any other development in the city, you're gonna be using city streets. This is a county property with county access to county roads um onto the highway, so they can use those. The city is greatly concerned. So are the residents of Seven Sisters uh at the hearing examiner. Uh meeting, many people from that subdivision voiced their concerns for how poor the road. Kind of already can handle them and they're not gonna be able to handle another hundred and sixteen homes, being able to use it.
One last question. When Seven Sisters was approved by the city. Um and that access point was left as egress and ingress for the northern properties for future development. Wouldn't that have been an optimal time to restrict that access?
We're actually having our city lawyer look into that.
Okay.
Right now, we have not heard back from her on it. Um so that is something that we are trying to determine out there as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, okay. I want to, I want you to talk about that city of impact. Is that something you've put on their preliminary plat or you refuse to put on it?
No, that is a requirement to have on the preliminary plat. Any subdivisions going on within areas of city impact have to have. That city's uh certificate for their sign-off. Uh what we're asking is to have that wording of approved, removed. Uh you don't see that in certificates for cities for areas of city impact. That just doesn't show up on it. That's just not the correct. Certificate to use. We're not approving the subdivision because it's not in the city, so we can't get approval to it.
But is a, is a certificate of, of city of impact need to be issued? No.
It's a required certificate to be on the plat. Um so like if this was in the city of area, area of city impact for Sandpoint, they'd have the same thing. Um it's noting that the city reviewed that actual application, the subdivision, they're signing off stating that yes, it's in the area of city impact. It's noting that the city reviewed that actual application in the subdivision, they're signing off saying that yes, it's in the area of city impact.
Thank you. Right, any other neutral positions? Correct, we'll move on to the opposing positions, now I understand that possibly the HOA has hired. Lisa Maline to represent some points of view that the HOA would like to speak to. If I could get a show of hands of everybody that would appreciate what we might be able to do is sometimes. If there's a large group of people that would like somebody to represent them, if I could see a show of hands, what we can do is consolidate that time. From your time into hers to allowing her to have longer than six minutes, I believe she has a presentation. Who is here that is opposing that would like to donate their time to Lisa to speak? So, and who here is opposing that would still like that three minutes to speak? Okay. So, uh, looks like where it's about split about eight and ten, you know, so Lisa, how much time do you need to speak?
Trying to time it to six minutes, so.
Well, I think we're okay doing nine minutes there or something on that, you keep it six if you can, but I would like for you to make sure that their, their opinions are in voice or please come and speak and opposition. Okay. Okay. Somebody's already getting up, sir. So please just come to the microphone and state your name.
Do you know, we own a home in Seven Sisters? And. You're going to hear a lot about traffic tonight and that's huge. But I'm not going to address that except to say, I think that the least the developer could do be to contribute to. The placement of a, the possible placement signal at Seven Sisters couldn't even grow. And my other two concerns, there seems to be a lot of effort to make something that is wet. Not wet anymore, just by talking about it, so I think the developer would get a lot more support from people if. The section behind the houses on Chulaloo. Was turned into a greenbelt park, whatever, and the number of properties reduced, number of lots reduced. My last thing, this is it. I went out, took pictures today, the print copy was so poor that I didn't submit them, one development in town. That has been all padded and laid out, all the streets and everything are there and the lots are all covered in weeds, it's. Ugly, I'm becoming, and it's a fire thing. So I think there needs to be a requirement. That the developer, while they own the properties and hopefully something can be worked out, once people buy properties, that we can be assured. That weeds will be cut, faded one way or another, long, properties will be mowed, we had to do that in a lot, we owned in. Ponder Point. We didn't, I guess we weren't required to, but the neighbors all appreciated the fact that when we bought that property, we made sure it was moved all summer long. And that's the kind of thing that needs to be done for people who love Bonner County and want to be a quality neighborhood. I would hope the developer would want that and keep those properties looking good and safe. Until they're sold and maybe build some.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Nicholas Buckmeltzer, I live in the Seven Sisters neighborhood and I wanted to appoint my three minutes to Jerome.
Okay, so six minutes for Jerome. We reset the clock, so yeah, thank you.
There's a timer going somewhere.
We'll count it down twice.
Okay. Good evening commissioners, my name is Jerome Buckmeltzer and I live on Ponder Point. And. I'm not going to speak regarding Seven Sisters insurance to a lot of people, so I just want to keep my comments to ponder points. And my, in particular, I'm concerned about the, the intersection at Highway two hundred. And Seven Sisters and also Kootenay Bay Road. It, it is the sole entrance and exit for people in Ponder Point and Whiskey Jack communities. And there's approximately two hundred homes there, so that's, that's a bottleneck we have to deal with on a daily basis, so. This proposed project is going to put cars onto the, onto the highway and it's going to further impact. That intersection, it is very difficult. To negotiate that road as it is right now, I can testify even coming here tonight. And then people in my car, they'll tell me, this is really difficult, but it's also a dangerous intersection. Last month, there were five accidents. I saw the aftermath of one and it was not pretty. So I can tell you right now, the, this project you're putting in there is going to make things worse, not better. And I think that we should. Should do something before somebody dies, I, I'm, I'm really sincere about that, we need to do something. As you know, there's a tragedy in, in Lahaina, Maui, and I think it's relevant in this case. Because there's a bearing on this, they, they. As you know, many people were incarcerated. While in their car, sitting in a queue to exit that town, they were in their cars, they thought maybe they're on their way to. Safety, but they got incinerated. Now. I imagine what it would be like with the two hundred homes in, on Ponder Point and, and Whiskey Jack. If a similar type catastrophe would get hit. You would have cars backed up, you know, on Whiskey Jack, on, on Ponder Point and all that. And the problem is you have one car that's ready to go onto the highway, but. He has, or she has to wait until there's an opening to get out, in other words, you have a huge queue and these people are really, are be putting in, in harms way in that. Situation, so we need a, a desperately need a traffic light there. I mean, we need a, a green light, literally and figuratively, to get onto the freeway for safety purposes, but it's not just in the case of some conflagration, something like that, but it's just also. You know, on a daily basis, we need that, now here's my proposal.
Can we please extend three minutes there?
Yeah, thank you, here's, here's my proposal, and that is. The, the, the state apparently is going to do a study. From McGee Road over to Kootenay Bay, there's no guarantee that they will ultimately put in a traffic light. I mean, there's no guarantees, but you can guarantee that there will, and I can tell you how you can do that. You could make a condition of approval. That the subdivision, the subdivision post a performance bond. A guaranteeing that the, a traffic light will be installed if, and only if, this, the state does not put in a traffic light. You know, that's, I think that's fair, if, if when the state puts it in, the bonds are tolerated, now you don't necessarily have to have a bond, you could probably. Put money in an escrow account and things like that, even interest bearing, they can make some money off of that, but the thing is, if the state does not put in that. That traffic light, the developer with the staff can do that, he's not willing to do that, then I say, deny the project. Have them come back at a later date when a traffic light is installed, because I'm telling you right now. There's two hundred homes there on, on Ponder Point and Whiskey Jack, they're. Suffering on a daily basis as is, we don't want to exacerbate this with this type of thing, no, I don't know how much time I have left here, I have. One minute, okay, really quick, I'll, I'll say something about the, the development itself, I was really sort of surprised. But they came in and, and cleared, cleared the forest, there's like twenty acres, they just cleared it. And anticipation, I should say presumption that they were going to get your approval. I think would have been better if they just held off and waited to see what happened, but they went ahead. And I, and no offense to the, to the engineers here, they were probably told, give us the most efficient design you can do, and they came up with it, the rectic, rectic, rectangular roads. You know, square, you know, rectangle lots, really efficiently done, but really unimaginative and not very attractive. We could have some curve linear roads, they could have saved some of the trees, they could put in a pocket park for kids, there's a whole slew of things they could do, so sending them back. To the drawing board to come up with something that would be not just more palatable for the founding owners and neighbors. But also for the future residents, we have to think about them too, give them a good environment to, to, to move into. So otherwise, you're going to end up, as, as John said, you're going to end up with a street pattern. And it's going to be filled with weeds, because no, no builder is going to go and say, I'm not going to build this because it's not going to be. Attractive enough to your buyers, so anyway, that's what I have to say, and I thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. This gentleman had his hand up back here first, right behind you there, alright.
My name is David Cry.
Thank you, it's alright.
Okay, I live there in Seven Sisters and I live on Chulaloo. And this road out there, just like you said, is terrible, you hear the ambulance all the time, I, I. I choose my time to go up on the mountain every day. And when I hear a siren, I say, well, I better wait for half an hour, forty-five minutes or else I'm going to have to go up there with the ambulances and everything and the. Tow trucks and whatnot, or maybe a helicopter, taking people out of there, or the scene, the cops of the cars ripped off, cut off and moved, I'm tired of that. And then, we're talking about their neighborhood that's congested as what they are right now. And we're going to do more. Now, all these kids have got to have someplace to go. Our, our neighborhoods are going to go downhill quick. And you're going to see things happen in there that you only think you're going to see in bigger cities. You're going to start seeing crime and you're going to start seeing, saying, kids have to have someplace to go and something to do. Our schools are not big enough here. Our playgrounds are far and few in between. You know, it's just, I, I hear all this talk about, about where. How they planned all this, and I just don't see the planning for the people in the area and the people that are going to live there, the traffic. You park a car on the street and there's hardly enough room for another car to go past. There's no parking, nobody plans to park and you got swells there and whatnot, and the water run down through there, nobody has a place to park. We keep saying this stuff over and over again, I just think it's on deaf ears, I spent three minutes the last time talking about crime and parking and. And the wetlands and the wildlife and everything else, it's just deaf ears, it just goes on, it's just like. We come here tonight and I just knew what I was going to hear, they're pushing, just like he said, they went out there and pushed the ground. They put all that trees in a big pile. Now, there's a lot of us in the community that are of age. Now. Our community is pretty much clean as far as smoke, we get enough smoke and sand point as it is. And here's these great big piles of wood, the project hasn't even been approved, you know they're going to burn it. That's not, that's air pollution, I don't care how you put it. We're going to breathe that stuff, we're going to get it in our lungs and we're going to have it all over our houses, we're going to have it everywhere. When they say removal, that means remove it. Gone, take it somewhere else. I, I just don't like the whole sight, it looks hideous. And maybe it's in, in just the planning stages and just the starting stages, but. This looks like something that's going to just go on and be just like an urban city that's, we don't want.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Jeff Williams, I live at the farm to the northeast. Over in Beaver Brook, which is an extension of Providence there. And there's a family next to us, the Holberts, and other families to the south, and then you have all the residences over in Kildare. Well, in addition to all the other items and concerns, I agree with all those, but the biggest one for me. Is fire. Okay, all of our residents on that side, now we heard that, you know, they were proposing to put a ingress egress. Into Kootenay, well, that doesn't do us a lot of good in our neighborhood. We would still have to transit through the subdivision to get out. Meanwhile, we're cooking, waiting for a hundred some families. To exit, now if you use a little basic math, figure five minutes to get out, round it off. Maybe a hundred homes and everybody knows when, if something chaotic like that, you're going to have to pack up maybe multiple cars to get out. Can you imagine the traffic jam, that's going to take hours to get people out, meanwhile, all the residents, Kildare, all that area. To the east and northeast, we have no way of getting the heck out. And that goes for train derailments, any other emergency that comes up, we've got one way, getting out of there. And not to mention fire crews coming in and out, that are going to add more chaos. So really, a lot of this other stuff, you gentlemen, obviously you have a lot more knowledge of. What's right, what's in code and what's not, but that's, that's the killer concern for me, especially in light of what happened. In Lahaina, as we all know, in Paradise, California, and we see fire around us every day. So it's not like this is something that doesn't have a, at least a, a. Moderate probability of happening at some time in the future, that's all I got to say, thank you.
Anybody else, thanks, please, I've got one guy coming up here.
Hi, I'm Larry Hoffman, I live in Seven Sisters next to Dan. And. I was at the. Sewer district meeting Monday. I think I'm the only one. People is there, I don't see anybody else. And. When I was there, we walked in and they were talking about. Good news, they received a. A grant for like nine million dollars. For updating their sewer district. Buildings, mechanical stuff, you know, other things they need. And. They're, they'll have to probably put up a millage. For the remainder of the money they need, and you're talking millions of dollars. I'm not talking anything about, I'm not putting down. The Board of Directors of the Sewer District, but what happened was. Because of the growth. Around Sam Point, Kootenay, Ponderay. There's been a lot of will serve letters, we've gone out like to Providence and. I think they overpromised on what they could give out, so they need to improve their sewer system. So, or the, you know, the treatment and things like that. You know, because you have Slighter Apartments coming online pretty soon. The other apartments on, by ninety-five Restaurant. You have the Spring Hill Suites. On ninety-five, so there, and then the houses that are built on Whiskey Jack Road, you know, the individual houses, so I think they'd have to update their. Their plan and. It's going to mean they're going to have to have meetings with all of us. The ones that are in the taxing district, because our, the mills are going to go up on our house. And it's, you know, it's a good thing, it's growth, I'm not against growth. But I think we're going to have to have meetings and really understand what it is they need. Before we. Add these new big projects, because these big projects are going to be. A strain on the system we already have. And I understand, I, I was told by. An official. That this project here was, has been going on for eleven years. You know, different people have been trying to do this. So I don't see why we can't put this off a little bit longer. You know, put a moratorium on this and let us. Listen to the sewer district and find out what they need and find out how much it's going to cost us. You know, I'm sure nobody wants to sign a blank check to figure out what this is going to cost. So that's, that's, you know, I didn't know if you knew this, you probably already knew this.
Thanks, okay, thank you, sir. Yeah. I'll get turns, yeah.
I'm Heather Bows and. I just really want to voice my concern in regards to the education system and what it's. What the growth is doing for our education system, I know that you guys aren't in charge of the Andre School District. I just really hope that we are looking at our community as a whole. And understanding what our community can. Handle and making sure that we're working with our school districts, I'm really nervous about how it's going to impact. Our kids and our schools on how quickly our growth is. And just to keep that in tight consideration while making these big decisions, especially with schools that are already full, so.
Thank you, Heather. Yes.
My name's Emma Kiefer Camp and I live on Kildare, which is just off of Providence, my neighbors with. One of the gentlemen that just came up and spoke, and I wasn't really planning on saying anything. And I wasn't really planning on saying anything, because I was just gonna be here in opposition, but just a couple of things, um, it was mentioned that, um, the city of Kootenay doesn't agree with an egress, um, into Seven Sisters and unless it was just for emergency use, um, at least right now. And I haven't been through all of Bonner County, but, um, I don't know if we have another place where we have like locked gates where people are kind of locked in, and are we gonna be the guinea pigs to, um, hope that it gets unlocked in time for us to, um, evacuate if there was an emergency? And, um, you also had kind of mentioned, um, one of you, I think it was Robert, you had asked what the distance between, um, the um, Seven Sisters Road was to Providence, and it was, I think roughly a quarter of a mile. Well, if you, um, look at the distance between, um, Highway two hundred all the way to Firestone, if that was what was going to be like the solution and we put, um, a road or an egress into Firestone, that's a lot longer, and so we might have another way out or even another way kind of around and into, um, Kootenay or out of our area, but that's twice, three times as long as it, you know, would be for anybody else, um, because that's quite a bit of a trek, I've been to that back area, and then again, that's also gonna be on two, you know, two privately maintained roads, and then you're also gonna be having to annex and get into, um, at least two private, um, properties to get to Firestone. So that kind of doesn't make any sense to me, and I just wanted to throw that out there, and then just on a more personal note, um, I really appreciate that the city of Kootenay is really, um, taking the, um, thoughts of, um, the residents of Seven Sisters into consideration, and I just hope that is the same for, um, the other residents that live on Providence and the private roads, thank you.
Thank you. This lady here first.
My name is Janelle Shields, I live on Providence Road. And the phrase of circling the wagons and shooting inwards applies to this proposition. We're a community here. We're all affected by this, and we're going to increase the size of Kootenay by a third, but not require this developer to pay any of the impact fees. Require sidewalks, easements. Any, he wants all the benefits, but none of the conditions. In two thousand twelve, a subdivision was proposed for thirty-nine homes. And the will serve letter from the city of Sandpoint for water was conditioned on that subdivision being annexed into Kootenay. Now, here we are in twenty-three, the will serve letter was granted inexplicably without any conditions. This should be a huge flag, how did this happen? And calls to the Panhandle Health was not received, was not returned. Here's the real tragedy of this, if it gets approved. The tragedy of what it could be. This could be a great development, this could be an asset to this community. If the developer stepped up. And we have good communities, a great example is Cedars at Sand Creek, seventy-seven homes, two accesses, bike paths, hiking trails, a park that they donated to the city. On Halloween, it's packed with kids, why? Because there's sidewalks and it's safe. Where are the kids gonna go on Halloween? Where are the kids gonna go to skateboards? Mayor Shelby of the city, the mayor of the Sandpoint is on record, July nineteenth, City Talk, forty-nine minutes, ten seconds into that conversation, he states, quote, "There is low flow and volume currently to Kootenay-Ponderay. And the city should consider seriously before extending any more water rights, low flow, low volume, and we have a fire hazard." We're a community here, on Providence Road, we're a community. Our views are varied, but we're, we're united by one thing, by where we live. We want the best for each other. I want the best for this development, I'm gonna be impacted for it. I want you to hold them accountable. We want the best, not the worst, because this is gonna set the tone. Whether this development will be just an urban jungle or it could be a feather in the cap for this community if it were held to park, open space, sidewalks, a safe place for kids. Let's ask our developers to step up.
Thanks, Janelle.
My name's Brad Morris, I'd like to yield my time to Ashley Gersonberger.
All right, Ashley.
See, I have one thing, I might have to try to just maybe get that queued up and then you can ask somebody else to go.
This gentleman is gonna speak for three minutes.
Um, his name's Robert Rutan, um, I am currently the acting president for the HOA for Seven Sisters. Um, I moved here from Michigan about five years ago, I've been coming to Sandpoint about twenty years, my daughter married a young man from Clark Fork. We didn't know this place was so beautiful here, so we decided to retire her, but the lady, the lady just spoke, she was very on point. Um, the, the, uh, the tr- the traffic people talking about putting a, a center lane in there is just not adequate. Twice now in the last month, I've been coming down to get to Seven Sisters and unfortunately, the people, I feel so bad for them over in Ponder Point, I feel bad for all of them there. They try to get out at the left there and there are people coming fifty-five miles an hour. They jump into that left lane to try to go up some speed, which I understand that, and we're coming into Seven Sisters to turn left and it's, it's ahead on collision. I almost had a head in collision twice there from people coming that way. So if they put another lane in there, that's just gonna create more problems, so that, it's, it's definite, there's gotta be a traffic light there, there has to be. And like she said, there should be people held responsible to get that done before this is done, because many times I was in the building business for forty years, so I'm not opposed to building, I'm not opposed to progress, but if we don't do this right and the infrastructure is not correct, we end up as people, all of us here in the community, you can see the people that are opposed to it for this reason. We want this to be a feather in the cap of the community, or even though I'm from the outside, I love this place and I wanna see it well, and I don't wanna see my family die or anyone else's family. And I was told there had to be three people die at that intersection before a light would be put in there. And so who, I said to them, whose family do you want it to be? I don't want it to be my family, nor do I want it to be any of these people in this room. That's a serious issue, and we've been dealing with this now for, it's getting worse, we've been dealing with it for about four years, and it's getting actually worse. I let people come from Ponder Point, when I get ready to turn, I wave them out because it's just a free for all in the morning, and also sometimes when you try to get out of there, they have no way to go and there are people coming fifty-five miles an hour that don't slow down and, and they don't have a chance. So the other thing is, when I first moved here, I was told, I looked at the property, I loved the buildings in there, in that, in that subdivision, but I mentioned to someone in town that I was in the Seven Sisters subdivision, and the first thing they said out of their mouths was, oh, you live in the swamp over there. And I said, well, I didn't know that. And, but now I know that we have a water problem there. So that's another issue for us, because there needs to be water taken out of that area, and it's very, very hard to get the water gone for us even in, in the wintertime when there's a lot of rain, so.
Thank you, Rob, thank you.
I can bring up her, um, things of this.
All right, if you wanna speak, come in.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much. Is the timer going? Okay. So my name is Ashley Gersonberger and I live on Chewylo Loop. I live on one of the properties that borders the wetlands that actually shows up on the wetlands map and dot number seven that was represented as being found as wetland by the surveyors that came out. The pictures that you're seeing here are pictures of the wetland, and this is the property literally that borders our backyard, so I call it Chewyla Lake because it is literally a lake and standing water except for probably July, August, and as soon as the rains start back up in September, it falls right back up again. So that trench that you're seeing to the left of the screen, that is a trench that was dug by the wetland surveyors and it was absolutely full of water. And then the pictures that you're seeing to the right is your standing water that's right outside of the one dot where they said that that was actually wetland. And if you look in that picture to the left, you can see a hole that was dug, and then immediately to the right, you can see another hole that's dug, and all those holes were full of water in May and in June. So I appreciate the surveyor's expertise, that's my backyard. So if you wanna know how wet that property stays all year long, come ask me. I'll show you, I have video where I'm stomping around in there and it's squishy everywhere. So you don't have to dig far, you just have to walk across the property. Full of aquatic life, um, there's a ton of salamanders, there's frogs, there's, I stepped on one the other night when I walked out, just let my dog outside. It, it is a huge wetland area, and one of the things that I proposed, and it's in my presentation somewhere, if you scroll a little bit, is that the wetland area, which is approximately five to, I would say, nine lots, be left as a greenbelt, be left as a green space for the aquatic habitat, for the wetlands, for the water that drains from our properties to this area. Most of us that live on Chewylo that have properties that border this wetland, we actually had trenches that were dug by our developer from the backyard to that area to drain, because we had water plucking around our homes. And we were told that if this development goes in and if they fill the wetlands and they make a couple of ditches and say all the water's gonna go there, that if our homes start suffering from water ingress and issues that we have to go with Sue the new homeowners of those properties, which I think is hardly fair, because they have no idea what they're walking into. Um, I don't think that destroying these wetlands in order to pack in five to nine more homes serves the community at all. I do not believe that these homes are gonna be affordable by most of the residents of Bonner County that have a household average income of forty-four thousand dollars. Please leave this part alone. I understand jurisdictional, I understand not jurisdictional. I think that it is up to us, up to the commissioners, up to the cities, up to the counties to preserve areas like this and to leave them alone so they can serve the purpose that they were naturally made for, which is to accept and mitigate water. I don't understand why we build and fill on top of these areas and try to fix something that isn't broken, it's doing a fabulous job where it is. Um, a couple of things that I want to bring up, I agree with everybody's comments about the traffic, that's really terrible. Um, I did speak to a few members, um, at the DEQ and Panhandle Health, they feel like they've been completely stripped of their abilities to weigh in to developments that are going in where they need septic or private or public water systems and said that soil doesn't perk. This is going to cause issues, they get calls about this all the time, and all they can do is kind of put their hands up once they're called in later and issues start occurring. So that was really disheartening to hear that from our actual soil surveyors who go, yeah, you're absolutely right, there's gonna be massive problems there. Um, I think with drains and no mitigation to the lake and a, a proposed massive French drain, that's not gonna be enough for this development at all, as you can see from these images. Um, I agree that having a one-way in and out of the new Providence development is problematic, especially for emergency response. Whether it be a crash at that intersection and then somebody having a heart attack in that development and not even a sheriff's officer that can get in. I do not agree as somebody who lives in Seven Sisters that there should be an easement from Seven Sisters into Providence, because our streets are so narrow. One car parking into it makes it very hard to navigate and having all those homes and two cars times a hundred and sixteen lots, it's just not feasible at all. Um, I wanted to touch on what Larry mentioned earlier about the city of Kootenay and them allowing a will serve letter for sewer. They absolutely have no infrastructure that can support this at this time, and they just received a grant that can pay for part of it. Not all of it, they need more money, and they still don't know what they're gonna do for infrastructure. So I think that that is something that you guys should consider when looking at this development. And then one other thing that I thought was interesting is the will serve letter that was issued by the city of Sandpoint for water. There was that interview with Shelby where he said, hey, we have low flow, we shouldn't really be doing any of this stuff. And somebody had recently put a letter in the A V B on August eighth that said, "In reading about the proposed Providence subdivision, I see the city of Sandpoint has given a will serve letter to the developer for water, this is in direct opposition to what the city of Sandpoint's current land states, which is CD two policy E, water services need to be extended to development within urban
Bone, by the microphone.
I'll read sideways.
And I think we're out of time, but you can just finish up.
Just finish the quote, okay. And it, and it just says, um, the last part of it is the state line use act also discourages the kind of that extension of service. So why did the city provide a will serve letter to a developer that is not within the city limits of Kootenay, but rather within the city area of impact? Thank you.
All right, who else do we have here? Ma'am.
My name is Leslie Holbert and we live at the end of Providence by the Williams Beaverbrook. My husband was born and raised here in Sandpoint, raised in Kootenay over there and it's been brought up, but before this ever gets approved, what I would love to see is you guys come to Providence Road and try to get out on the highway in the morning to go to work. We, we, we all know that Clark Fork, Hope, everybody is moving out there because they can't afford Sandpoint anymore. So the traffic is horrendous now. In order to own a home in this new subdivision, it's probably gonna be a double working family. So probably two cars per house. Think about that. This is going to be insane, you're talking over two hundred cars trying to get out to go to work with a fifty-five highway and in the wintertime, they're never gonna get out, never. And the only other thing is, on this gate thing, would the fire department from Northside be coming to unlock it if there's an emergency? How long would that take? I'm just wondering. Thank you.
Sir. Or ma'am, sorry, couldn't, couldn't see who is raising their hand, soft landing.
My name is, uh, Brenda Fitchett and I live at the end of Kildare, which is all the way to the end of that road. And I can't really say anything, because my neighbors and everybody said it for me, so we are with all of them.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Right, yes, sir. Getting a lot more hands up here than, than those eight that I saw that wanted to talk. Please, so you might be down to three minutes.
He's got a nice shirt.
All right.
I need to tell both, so I live on Chewylo Loop and Seven Sisters, and really, basically, I support all the things that have been said here by the residents, uh, surrounding the development, proposed development. However, there's a few things that need to be corrected, everybody seems to be concerned about the distance between the intersection of Seven Sisters and two hundred and Providence Road, and yeah, maybe a quarter of a mile. But what isn't true is, is that the, there is no left-hand turn lane into Seven Sisters, it's a, pardon the expression, suicide lane, which causes some of the issues, okay? Also, uh, in regards to that particular issue, and I sympathize with everybody trying to get out uh, in the mornings and going back in the evening sometimes, um, the speed limit changes to forty-five miles an hour, but nobody, nobody does that.
I did.
Thank you. I got a gold star for you. But the problem is, they don't, it needs to be moved back in towards Hope, so that people really get the idea, hey, wait a minute, it's forty-five. Um, and I absolutely agree with the man from Ponder Point. Uh, I've done several developments and I've represented clients and done it. And inevitably, it, it, when a situation like this develops, the developer has to contribute to the installation of a light, if a light's required, or if a governmental agency doesn't, uh, install the light themselves, it's never both, it's one or the other. Happens all the time. The other thing, and I'll leave it with this, in the submitted plat, it states that the streets and the, um, stormwater system is gonna be maintained by the HOA. And I gotta tell you, that's one big actuary fund they're gonna have to put together, that everyone's gonna have to contribute, and they're gonna have a very high monthly HOA fee or yearly. It's gonna be a sales deterrent. And believe me, I know about that. It's a lot of money to take care of those streets. It's a lot of money to take care of stormwater issues, as we're beginning to find out in Seven Sisters. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, sir?
Yeah, I'm older, I live at the end of Providence Road also, um, the issues that I, everybody has are just overwhelming. The issues that I, everybody has are just overwhelming, I mean, this development should never even. Been brought up to this point, um, you guys talk about Firestone being in a, you know, ingress egress. All that Firestone is going to do is bring in the people that live on North Kootenay, another access to get out. So it makes. That much more traffic for us at that point. Because trying to get out on North Kootenay Road on the highway two hundred, especially in winter with the grade. It's very entertaining, very entertaining, sliding backwards all over the place. The other thing that hasn't been addressed that I have heard is the next twenty acre parcel right behind the subdivision. What's going to happen to that? That's already been when that was originally at sixty good, but that was all part of that, we understood. So if here we got another twenty, we're going to add another forty, sixty. Homes on there, and what's that do to us there again? I love my lifestyle out there. This is just going to destroy. You know, there is, this, this subdivision would be great over on McGee Road, I mean, it's a nice flat level, got infrastructure.
Other people would disagree.
I know, I, I think that would be an awesome place because obviously. This subdivision is never going to go in their neighborhood, the developers, it's in our neighborhood. And we don't want it, and it's if they better develop this in a. Like I say, one acre, two and a half acres, but the county should have this, I think is their minimum now? Is that, is that correct?
No, that's.
Okay, then this would made it easier, the city of Kootenay would have said. Oh, great, we will annex them in, they would have access, access of the school, access roads, all that. When it's done like this. You know, luckily the city of Kootenay in their wisdom says, you know, this, we just hope the county in their wisdom says the same thing. This is not where it needs to be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Dan Bounce for the opposition. I thought, uh, yelled it and Marla was down. For the project, but I think she's. Twenty, thirty years. Too soon. And way too big, maybe in stages. Maybe it would work, but. I noticed one thing that uh, that. Sandpoint and Kootenay will supply water and sewer. I wonder what that's going to cost us. And rate increases when that goes in. That many homes, it's not going to be cheap. They, back to the. Cost. Mexicans say, okay. Or why? Who's going to benefit? From that thing? Who's going to suffer? If you don't think there's a problem. You should try driving through Sandpoint someday. Try to get a appointment with a medical professor, doctor, or even get in the hospital. They're all crowded. Try to go from Pondray to Clark Fork some morning about seven o'clock. I count seventy-two rigs. The one morning lined up there, waiting to get out. That's before a monster like that happened. I don't see how. You can consciously. Consider. A monster that size at this time. It's just not fair. With the taxpayers. It's going to be a, be a very dangerous. Situation. I have spoken.
Thank you, Dan. All right. The other oppositions? Lisa, okay, all right, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and um, Council. Um, my name is Grace Bauer and I am a resident of the Seven Sisters Neighborhood. I was, I previously served a four-year term on the Kootenay City Council. And a year and a half ago, the, I'm no longer there, so this is not quasi-judicial uh, comment, commentary. Uh, the applicant came to the city of Kootenay. To tell us about what he was going to do and said, you know. If you guys don't like it, we're going to go to the county because they will rubber stamp anything, and he has made good on that, his word. Um, there were a lot of concerns back then and there are even more now. Um, I believe wholeheartedly this. Development should go through, should be denied by the zoning commission. And be sent back to the city of Kootenay and they, that the applicant should put at least half the amount of homes proposed. Um, I mean, we have so many issues. I mean, I, I, my heart goes out to the people in Ponder Point, those that live on Providence Road, this will forever change their life. Um, I, I don't think that the. The road should, uh, the city should be giving access to county. A county subdivision, I think it's appropriate to, for them to have access, but it should go through the city. Um, this is the area of city impact and I know a lot of people aren't familiar with what an area of city impact is, but. The area of city impact that we're looking at is from Shingleville. To McGee Road and it goes all the way up to Selly Valley and all the way down to the lake. And anywhere in that area, you, uh. A, an applicant can apply for a subdivision and could be put in there, so people need to be aware. Of the rules and that their um, way of life could be changed at any moment. Um, this is a appropriate place to extend the city because it is adjacent to the city, but it needs to be done thoughtfully. And um. Anyway. Uh. I, I have a lot of things on here, but I think a lot of them are already covered. And um, I would ask for your consideration to deny this. Um. Application, thank you.
Thank you, Grace. We may have one online. Want to do that first? I think you're muted, ma'am, or sir.
Hi there, this is Molly McCann with the Lakes Commission. Can you hear me?
Uh, barely, but we're going to work on it.
Oh, you think it's on your end?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi.
You can hear me?
Really quiet and will listen to you, it's very, very quiet, for some reason we're not hearing you that loud, so please begin.
Okay, I'll do my best. This is Molly McCann with the Lakes Commission. And my concern is that the conditions for approval number fourteen in the staff report. And also discussed today in the presentations. State. That they're waiting for the Corps of Engineers to provide jurisdictional determination off this professional wetland delineation already performed and documented. But that is not a service the Corps of Engineers provides to the county for subdivision review. That is why we have professional delineators, delineators, and that is why the county required this applicant to hire one. There is no second step here in regard to wetlands. It's already been determined to have wetlands. Based on soils, plants, and standing water. This falls directly in Bonner County jurisdiction and code. There is no requirement in code that this needs jurisdictional determination from the Corps at all. Bonner County Code twelve seven three three requires a building setback to wetlands. And it specifically states that the wetland determination can be made by the applicant's certified wetland delineator. That was left out in the. Bonner County Revised Code Staff Presentation tonight. This preliminary plat and proposed subdivision design should clearly show the wetland indelination. And proposed mitigation. This public hearing is the time for these requirements to be clearly addressed, not later in the improvement plan. Also, to address the flooding issue. The floodplain code guided by FEMA is only related to property adjacent to lakes, rivers, and streams. That is not relevant on wetland soils. What is relevant is the fact that certain areas of this property are prone to flooding. Because they have hydroic anaerobic soils that don't drain. That is not only proven by the delineation report, but by the soil classification, prime farmland if drained. This soil is prone to flooding. And can legitimately cause financial losses to the property owner who purchases a lot on those soil types. And this is required to be reviewed by the county and you all tonight. Under the purpose of environmental standards in code twelve seven hundred B. To protect its community from the loss of lives and property. And to reduce public and private financial losses due to flood, fire, et cetera. The county has been provided adequate evidence that the property has wetlands and poorly drained soils. And that those areas need to be avoided. This proposed subdivision design is required to demonstrate that as part of the application. And public hearing process.
Thank you, Molly, that is your three-minute time limit, um, I do appreciate you taking the time to reference points that you uh, had questions with and would like clarification on.
Um, I think I lost some time because of.
We started it at three minutes, but I appreciate it, thank you. I did, and I'll relay it to the rest of the group. Sure, she, she basically, Molly had um, questions on regards to point number fourteen in the. Um, staff report, um, and also questions, the core engineer twelve point seven point three of Bonner County Code. In regards to wetlands being delineated on the plat map. Of the code and I think uh, hopefully um, Lisa will be able to go over some of those questions, I saw her shaking her head and affirmation of what. We could barely hear Molly say. All right, Lisa, you have two and a half minutes due to chronic overuse and.
We overpromised and.
Yeah, 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 all right. I think six minutes.
I'll try to go. Quickly as I can. Um, first of all, I'm a partner at Sandpoint Law. I'm a fourth generation Sandpoint Italian. Born and raised here, graduated high school here, this community means something to me, I'm not opposed to development. I'm opposed to unthoughtful development. Um, and I, and I represent the Seven Sisters HOA in this regard, so I just have that map up there to tell you. Uh, the delineation between the two projects, which we've seen. A bunch, so. On the line. So what my goal here today is to give you. Some um, standards that this commission, you guys, you four gentlemen, get to use. And must review and approve for every subdivision coming before this commission. So Swati did an amazing job, she told you. The zoning districts and she told you the design criteria. But there are five other criterias that you guys get to use. To approve or deny a subdivision. So even if it meets all of the design criteria and Zen zoning, it means all those criteria, you can still deny it based on these. And if I did my PowerPoint right, it will. We're going to go through them a little bit at one at a time, the site is physically suitable for the proposed development. That means. Just because you can build it, doesn't mean you should build it in this. Location. Here is a photo of the Seven Sisters subdivision, this is um, their stormwater. Swales. Um. And the concern is. The runoff from the standing surface water and wetlands will flood the subdivision. Which is already at capacity. This uh, Seven Sisters Homeowners Association employed and hired. Um, since the hearing examiner, an independent civil engineer. Um, Ryan Phobes from foresight engineering. To review the stormwater management plan. Just to be certain that their subdivision wasn't going to be impacted. Ryan Phobes could not provide me any um, answers. Um, he told me that the stormwater management plan provided. Didn't provide enough detailed information. To determine if the plan was actually going to be successful. This is the same. Outcome that your Bonner County engineer determined as well. The application is incomplete. This isn't a, let's approve it and see how you do. This is do it. Show us how you did it. And let us check it. This subdivision deserves. An opportunity to confirm. That their stormwater management plan is going to be successful. Um, I think part of the. Uh, conditions of approval is if they abide by this. But I think it's unfair to say we'll approve it and you go forward and my subdivision owners have no ability to double check that. To confirm it, to come forward and say, hey, there might be a mistake. The proposed subdivision will not impact adversely impact Bonner County's natural resources. We heard a lot about that today. Um. You know. I'm going to. So, going back to this map, here in the area of wetland, we're in Hagan on the flat, you can see it. I thought I was speaking clearly, and then you can see as the wetland, this is a very recent picture, by the way, because the, the trees are gone. Um, you can see it circle around and it goes down here and all of this is green. What's going to happen is this water with impervious surfaces, which we don't have clear calculations for, is going to force this water this way. Unless we can confirm that the stormwater management plan will work, which we can't. So it's premature to preliminarily approve this without those details. You won't get a microphone.
Might create feedback.
I'm gonna.
It goes here.
Now we're on to the second. I think we've all heard at least about it. I won't dive into the legal. Opinion, other than. The Supreme Court stripped the Corps. Of any jurisdiction. Relating to. Wetlands that doesn't connect to water or that you can't definitively. Determine where the water ends and the wetland begins. Essentially what this is the court said, so that means. Second rendered all wetlands not connected to navigable waterways outside the jurisdiction of the Corps. It was customary practice for this commission and other commissions and councils to rely on the Corps. To police the developers' use of the wetlands, including filling in of wetland areas that were non-jurisdictional. This is no longer happening. The Army Corps of Engineers will no longer comment on those projects. You can no longer rely on them. To protect your natural resources. This is, it's now your duty. Under this provision of the subdivision code. To analyze the natural resources that are existing at the site. And determine if they were adequately accounted for. And you can do this through those standards of approval. So you can deny this application and send it back to the developer for more thoughtful understanding of where those waters are. And how they, how their potential use of that area impacts. The stormwater management plan, the neighboring parcels, the site itself. The public and private services. Uh, are adequate for future residents. So you have the ability to deny this application if the water sur- sewer. The fire protection, the emergency services, school facilities, or transportation aren't adequate for the residents or the users. So that's not saying there's a traffic study that was done, I'm going to rely on that. It means there's a room full of people here telling you there's a transportation issue and you have the ability to. To thoughtfully review that. I grouped two together to save time. I grouped two together to save time. Um, the proposed subdivision will not cause. The public at large. Hazards to safety or health. And also the proposed transportation system does not create hazards or congestion. It's customary. For a traffic study to include areas of impact or known hazards that are within a certain period. Area of impact, I should say. So. Here it is, Google Earth today. Seven Sisters and Ponder Point Providence Road. It's point two nine, I calculated it out. The difference between the two. That's close enough and everyone knows that the ponder point. Seven Sisters intersection is a very known hazard. It should be accounted for in the traffic study. I, I think that this ca- commission has the ability to make that um. Sit deny this and send it back and have a full picture of how a eleven hundred new trips a day. Is going to affect the. Intersection two tenths of a mile away. And just because I felt it was important, I'm. The Google Earth is standing at the Providence Road. And at the very end. Um, not the first car, but the second car on the other lane is Seven Sisters and Providence, oh um, Ponder Point. That distance is very short. Um, a left-hand turn lane is gonna do nothing for the ponder point. Seven Sister subdivision, so the traffic study needs to tell me that. Uh, left turn lane is gonna help the people going east, it's not gonna help the people going west. Which is where the problem lies. So the, so a traffic study. That shows the eleven hundred cars impacting that sub, that um, intersection. Would be helpful information for you guys. If it says that there's no impact, great. If it says there's an impact and there needs to be something done, that's something you should know. And the proposed subdivision complies with the design criteria. I would say that it doesn't because the application is incomplete. It doesn't have the appropriate engineering. Even the Bonner County engineer can't approve it. So I laid it out. All of them. Right there. Uh, I think they only passed one. Um. They're in the appropriate zoning district. And I want to reiterate again, I appreciate the developer coming to the table, trying to revise things. Um, I think that there's a little bit more work that can be done because I think the subdivision. Um, there is uh, appropriate, it just needs to be more thoughtful.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, uh. Let's see. The commissioners um, can now discuss the file. Yes. Uh, yes.
Randy Stoltz, for the record, I apologize for my late arrival. I was working with the client online at home and. Trying to monitor this on Zoom at the same time and realized I kinda wanted to weigh in on this. I'm a lifelong resident of Bonner County. And growing up. From sixty-seven on in this county. We always put a great store on neighborliness. And I really question this developer's willingness to be a good neighbor based on some of what I've heard. Um, it seems he's attempting to circumvent annexation by Kootenay. As close as this is, I mean, it's right in their air, right? Next door, it's in their area city impact very clearly. The concerns about traffic volume. Of traffic increasing the access and egress, the lack thereof. Um, the impact on schools. Um, the questionability of the stormwater plan is provided. The impact on the sewer district, the lack of accommodation of wetlands. The lack of parks and greenways in their plan. Um, there's so much of this plan is presented that begs for improvement. And I would encourage you to deny this proposal and send it back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Randy. Alright, any other question or any other comments from the public? Um, I don't know if questions, you know, we've already spoken, I'm sorry. Uh, any other comments, public comments? Yes, sir?
We care about the people at fine, um, Providence Road coming out of their way to get away from.
That's the public, or we'd ask for quietness in the room, sir. Please allow him the ability to speak.
One, one of the problems of coming into the subdivision Seven Sisters is.
You've already spoken.
I did, yeah, I just wanna say to them, we're quick about the going through Kootenay.
Yeah, we're not gonna go through two, two times here, so I'm sorry, I didn't know you'd already spoken. So anybody else that has not spoken that would like to add public comment? Alright, so at this time. We're gonna close public comment. And ask the commissioners if there's.
Let's take a break.
Yeah, like, yeah, let's take a ten-minute recess to hit the restrooms. Um, we're starting, we'll meet back here at fifty-four.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 right, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Open the meeting back up from the recess. All right, now we'll have the commissioners discuss the file.
Is this before the?
Yeah, this is before the closing, so. You guys have anything you'd like to discuss?
Discussion. You know, as you guys know, the public doesn't know that I've been a resident of Bonner County for forty nine years. Driven by the proposed subdivision multiple times. But I did want to talk to the commission. One of the first things and the lawyer just presented her little PowerPoint kind of went over a lot of stuff. When I started to look at this subdivision, I was directed to. By our county code twelve dash six forty five, which is the standards for review of applications. And made a few notes on that. Six forty five D. Says the public and private services, including but not limited to water sewer services, solid waste, fire protection, emergency services. And school facilities and transportation, which will serve proposed subdivision. Are adequate for the needs of future residents or users. A lot of the testimony today and a lot of the loss that I had, it doesn't really meet that category. E, the next one is the proposed subdivision will not cause circumstances to exist that will cause. Future residents or the public at large to be exposed to hazards to help if safe. Once again, I think it's, you know, with all the congestion and the traffic problems. And access, one road in, one road out. You know, my opinion that if this subdivision is to occur. There needs to be two roads of access. Not for me to determine what those should be, but they should, it should have two accesses. You know, I just want to say I'm not opposed to development. I was a contractor for these forty nine years that I've been here and I did several subdivisions myself, so. I believe in growth and I believe this is a good location for growth. Close to Kootenay, it's next to Kootenay. And, and I really think that. It should be annexed to Kootenay before they even start. Or continue with their preliminary plan, needs to be redone. The third one. Which is F in this category, the design of the proposed subdivision or data improvements will provide for coordinated access to the county system of roads. With adjacent properties and will not impede the use of public easements for actors to or through the proposed subdivision. Proposed transportation is designed to adequately and safely serve future residents using without adverse impact in the existing transportation system. By reducing the quality of the service or creating hazards or congestion. This subdivision doesn't need those. Feel free to jump in and.
I would agree, this commissioner Clark. You said it perfectly. I really am focusing on the safety. Driving, I drive through that area. Not once a day, but twice a week. And in the morning. It's a serious accident. A lot. At a minimum, I would say. Including the traffic data from Seven Sisters. Must bring it up to the level you need a light that I would imagine combined. That's not my decision to make, but not make. But at a minimum of that.
So, you know, I'm probably at a different viewpoint than. So, you know, I think ITD is, we're just approving the application.
Yeah.
You know, there still is like, I'm not ITD. I'm not, you know, the fire department. And they've written comments and I know there's some disagreements from opposing sides of, you know, whether they can be serviced by water. I'm gonna go with the staff report on the recommendations by like. ITV by, by the people that are actually in the business of if it's safe or if it isn't, personally, I think. You know, the people that have the real problem are going to be ponder point. And those, and that's not from the subdivision, that's from poor planning and one entry point that's always been discussed and not having an exit. Out on the other side, there's been plenty of problems down there when it trains on that track. And access for ambulances or firemen or anything else, it's a known issue. I think. The, it would be tough to burden. A developer, anybody that has property. Quarter mile down the road. It's going to be turning in there with the problems that are part of Kootenay. City or part of that, that part of town, right? And I don't see. Now, I think the city is going to look at it like, I think the city is playing the people of Seven Sister personally. I think it's a lot of, this is just my gut is if that's annexed, there's a road that goes right through there. And into that subdivision and there's no gate or anything else on it. And they're looking at money. Not like we're friends with you at Seven Sisters, that's the nature reality right there.
I agree. And, you know, and like you say, there is, there, there are known hazards.
Sure.
To the area.
A hundred percent.
And it's our job to see if. This subdivision is going to add to that.
What if there's a, this play devil's advocate, you have a turn lane there in the left. Now, if I'm a gentleman or somebody that might want, not want to use the suicide lane to turn into my Seven Sisters subdivision and I live all the way in the back. Maybe I mosey on down the road. With my kids and take the turn lane into the left of Providence Road. Now the people in Providence Road will be like, I don't want more people coming through here and going over there, nobody wants. But there was a time when I moved from small town Alaska to go to school and in a far away, horrible place that had a place. A freeway called the four oh five. And there was real congestion. And there was real waits and there was real problems, right? So, I mean, these are all part of the growth factor of a, of an area that really a lot of people want to come to now, planning is important for that part of the growth. Looking at it as, you know, if they're willing to do a turn lane. For a road that wants to service them, right now we have people that don't want to give them access through something they have legal egress and ingress through. And they're supposedly in their, their solution is like, give us a stoplight. And bond for it. So anyways, that's my devil act on this side. Now, the other points.
That's not something that we're.
No, no, not even, yeah, it's a, so. Looking at the other points of the design or does it meet? You know, design standards. It's, it's tough to say that it doesn't when I have professionals, you know.
Yeah.
Review here that says it does. Is it, you know, like, I can put myself in the shoes of anybody that's going to live next to a hundred and fifty or three thousand more houses, it's like. Oh, I, I wouldn't want that, I think. But, but that's not my, that's not what we're here to do, we're not here to take away somebody else's right to, they want on their own property, whether it's cut down all the trees. Whether it's, you know, build a pond, you know, as long as they're going through the proper channels. Of what's legal to do on property they bought with their own money. You know, it's not, th- those are their property rights, that's what we all get to have as property owners and so those.
Sure. And I guess can we ask swatty questions?
Yes.
So, there's not a whole lot of open space in this hundred and seventeen lots, is that in compliance with the? Code?
It is in compliance with the Bonner County revised code for that, I would like to pull up a code section from the Bonner County revised code.
So, we were told it was, and I think is where Jake probably going with.
Yeah, I was trying to confirm.
Confirm that it is.
I will like to pull up a code section here.
Okay.
So, we have a code section in here, V C R C. Twelve dash six twenty five. Which point B of that talks about public access parks and facilities. It says public access easements or the conveyance of land for public access parks or facilities may be required. For subdivisions that are contiguous to public lands, public streams, lakes, ponds, wetlands or similar areas. Or. For areas designated in a county facilities acquisition plan. As far as county is aware, there are no. Public. Lands. Adjacent to this property. There are no public streams, lakes, ponds, wetlands are, get to be. Determined by the Army Corps of Engineers, whether they are jurisdictional or not. For areas designated in the county's facilities acquisition plan, the county is not aware of a plan that says that. They have to provide a public space in this subdivision on this particular property. However, if, if it is required in, with the presence of these areas that they provide some public amenities like. Public access park or facilities, the applicant will have to be compensated at a fair market value for the, for the land that they. Give to the public, yeah. But, but they do meet the requirements of the Bonner County revised, it's not a requirement.
Sure. And I think bullet point three was what Lisa had questions to about the twelve thousand square feet, maybe you can touch on that, why this is not required.
Absolutely, so I will, I think that was, that was brought up by city of Kootenay.
Okay.
The point about sidewalks and pathways, if we look at. This, this section of the code twelve, six twenty five trails and parks. It begins with trails, that point A is all about trails. If you look at the first point, it talks about implementing Bonner County Trails Plan, we discussed that. Bonner County has not officially adopted a trails plan, so there is nothing that the, that the county can implement with the subdivision. Again, public access to trails, that is again implementing the trails plan, the county cannot. Implement something that it has not adopted. Sidewalks and pathways in residential subdivisions. I assume the, the city of Kootenay is reading that in isolation with the rest of the points.
Yes.
Of six twenty five, which is not the case, the county has never interpreted. Point three to be in isolation with the, with the Bonner County Trails Plan. So, again, that's not applicable, but we have, we still know that the applicant is providing a pathway on one side of the road. Connecting all lots in the subdivision.
Thank you, Spotty. Anything else to discuss before the rebuttal?
No.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I guess I'll say one last thing, kind of summarizing all the notes here. Key points, what everyone seems to want, a light on highway two hundred. Better stormwater management, which might mean, you know, losing three lots here, two lots there. For, you know, a bigger swell or whatever. That would kind of fit in with more open space. Sidewalks, whether they're required or not, seem to be wanted, that's a big subdivision. Uh, I mean, those seem to be kind of the highlights. I guess we'll hear the rebuttal.
Yeah, and I think when I was looking at, you know, the applicant's drawings of showing all the water shedding internal, right? So, it's all flowing from outside into the street, so nothing is going, nothing on their plan is showing watershed going towards Seven Sisters, it's all coming in. Which was a revised plan, I think that they came up with. Now, obviously, there's not a, you know, the applicant is not going to, without an application approved, they're not going to spend a ton of money on engineering. To go and do all of those, once they get an approval, then they find out if they can even do what they think it is and then. Idaho Department of Lands, you have. ITV, Panhandle, all these other people then say like, you have to, you still have to meet all these laws or all of our code, right? So, this is not a, a blanket, just so everybody's aware, this is not something that gives them the right to just go out and do things in violation of the laws of. Bonner County or anyways, ITV, ITV and everything else, I think that's important.
Yeah, yeah, we're not the last line of defense, sort of.
All right, so wrapping that up. No more questions for public or anybody? No. So, now we're gonna close, the chair closes the hearing to public testimonies, we're gonna open. Let the applicant have a chance to read for rebuttal for anything referred and whoever would like to present, please, the rostrum.
Can I start with a few things that were relating to the code, so I can just?
Yeah, staff can rebuttal now too, yep.
So, a couple of things there, we talked about six twenty five and why that doesn't apply to, to the project. Irrespective of that, we, we know that the applicant is providing pathways on one side of the road to connect all residential lots in the subdivision. We. Foster replacing the signal on ITV, that is, that is not under the jurisdiction of Bonner County, we cannot condition the approval. Based on that, because we, we have no jurisdiction over Idaho Transportation Department's highways. So, if ITV doesn't want a light there. They will not let any private landowner do that. Including the county, the county has no right to condition that. Traffic impact study has been sent to both Bonner County Road and Bridge Department as well as Idaho Transportation Department, they have reviewed the. Traffic impact study and accordingly, they have suggested improvements to be made to state highway as well as Bonner County roads. One thing to keep in mind in here is that Bonner County revised code requires only preliminary. Road design plans and preliminary stormwater management plans to be submitted with the application. The requirement is not to have the plans finally accrued. By either of the, either the agencies. Before the preliminary plat is approved, the reason behind that is it's, it's an, it's a cost intensive process to get. Stormwater management plans or road design plans completely approved, time consuming process. And. We, the, the, it's, it's. It would be infeasible to have those, to have the approved plans without. Getting a preliminary approval, preliminary approval will allow the applicant to go back. Fix the, the deficiencies in the plans, come back to the county, provide final plans that conform to the Bonner County revised code. That can then be developed on the site or, or the improvements can be made on the site. Before the final plat gets recorded. So, none of these conditions. Are going to be sidelined or none of these, all of these conditions will have to be met before the, the plat even gets recorded. So, there was a comment about the landowner clearing the land of. All trees. In Idaho, there is. Nothing stopping the landowners from clearing the land, it's according to the state law. That is not something that Bonner County came up with. One, again, Bonner County has no jurisdiction and cannot stop the landowner from clearing the land. Parks and community facilities, we talked about six twenty five point B. And why that is not applicable at this time. Education system and impact on schools and kids during the hearing examiner's hearing. The hearing examiners finding, one of the findings of fact was that. This is not an impact that can be handled at, at the level of this development or through private developments, because if. If the community in general wants the schools to do well or to schools to expand, then they should be supporting levies. School levies, but it's not a, it's not. Something that one development can address at this point of time. The EQ and PhD. PhD's review of the applications or sewer system. PSG and the EQ are responsible for, for. For making sure that the urban sewer systems are capable of handling what, what they provide will serve letters for. Again, the county cannot. Do that review in place of PhD and DEQ. We rely on their expertise to give us that information if the. If the sewer district says we have the capacity. And the, and PSG and DEQ agree, then we have to agree with that determination. So, there was. A question about wetlands, I think I, I heard Molly painfully. I, I might be able to reiterate what she said. I could be wrong though, but I, I will try to explain what wetlands are about in this case. So. U S in general, U S Fish and Wildlife is the, is the agency that provided the national, national wetland maps. Bonner County Revised Code. According to the Bonner County Revised Code, we use those. Wetland maps as an indication of whether there are wetlands on the property or not. They are not determinative. They, they are indicative, they are indicative maps. And once we get a project where we see these wetlands on the property. Not delineated, but indicated, indicated by U S Fish and Wildlife. We asked the applicant to go, to go get us a wetland delineation study. Which then is sent to U S Army Corps of Engineers, who's the enforcing authority. To determine where, whether those wetlands are jurisdictional or not, which means whether the Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over those wetlands or not. In this case. After, after this, after the latest case that was brought up. For wetlands. The court did not say that the Army Corps of Engineers has no jurisdiction over wetlands, that is completely incorrect. What the court said is they are waiting to see. They are revising on what, what wetlands Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over, that is what they are revising, they are going to be providing. I'm assuming that they are going to be providing new maps that could show wetlands that are under the jurisdiction of. U S Army Corps of Engineers. And that is the, that, that is the weight here. Okay, I think I have covered anything, but if the commission has any questions for me, based on.
Got this time. While he took care of several of these for me, appreciate that. You know, there was a statement about. This development impacting Kootenay's roads as, as presented. As presented, we're only talking about a twenty five foot. Lock gate fire access road only available for emergency vehicles or emergency situations. That's not going to put a burden on any additional. Capacity or issues on Kootenay's roads. I, I believe we mentioned during the presentation earlier, ITV has a project in this corridor plan for next year. Their own analysis on their corridor. Indicated that a light wasn't warranted at that intersection, I know we all have strong feelings about that, I've been in and out of there myself. There are issues there, no doubt, ITV I know recently has agreed to take another look at that. But the improvements they are constructing in their corridor next year do not improve like. Our traffic study was completed in accordance with Bonner County code requirements, which is our obligation. That was submitted to the traffic experts, both in Bonner County and ITV. And they both compare with the findings that a left turn lane into the subdivision is what's warranted to mitigate the impacts of this subdivision. Which is what we should be responsible for. There were some questions, statements about. Both Sandpoint and Kootenay Pottery Sewer District's infrastructure needs and costs of infrastructure. If anything, this project is going to help that. This project is going to provide a million dollars to K P S D and new user facility fees on top of the developer building all the improvements, that's not. That, that's not a cost that the individuals within K P S D's district will share, that is. The developer is bearing that full burden and constructing all those improvements for this subdivision. Right, and like the same case for water, I'm not. Hundred percent sure what those new user facility fees are going to be, but they're going to be similar, similar. So, it'll be a million dollars paid roughly to both those jurisdictions. On top of all the possible infrastructure actually going in. Yeah, there's some statements about fire. You know, again, this, this. This infrastructure, this development was modeled by sandpoint with their water system. They determined that this will have sufficient fire flow. They determined that this will have sufficient fire flow under max day demand plus fire flow conditions. There are sufficient flows for this development. I know there are issues in other parts of. Pondure and Cootenay for sure. There's a lot of dead end. Small diameter water mains, for example, within the city of Cootenay. There's long dead end runs of main and pond array. And there's people that want to continue to build, develop and extend those mains. Those are issues. That's the outlier of the system. There's a twelve inch water main in. Within Seven Sisters Drive. We're going to be looping a new twelve inch main through Providence Road, tying back into the existing main in two hundred. This may actually improve pressure for those in this in this area. There were definitely some concerns on stormwater. I certainly understand that. It looks like Seven Sisters wasn't designed and maybe reviewed correctly. This development, I I felt like the comments from Warner County and view of this were pretty benign. Swati mentioned this, you know, you don't normally develop the full infrastructure plans for this level of. Projects. We get our approvals and we move forward. Gary discredit, we've taken this pretty far. We're. We're very far along in our grading. I'd be happy to sit down with the engineer hired by the. homeowners association, walk through those plans. I feel like I can understand them pretty clearly. All the water is directed inward. Everything will drain to the existing drainage draw to our property, alleviating issues that are out there today. And and again, this, these site soils aren't unique to this neighborhood. They're the same across Sandpoint, across Pondure, across Cootenay. It's the same stuff. They're they're definitely developable. Everything you see around us, this building is sitting on the same soils right now. Sorry, I'm just kind of trying to see which ones Swati addressed and which ones maybe hadn't been addressed. Swati addressed the wetlands. I feel pretty well. Think that that addresses the notes I had.
My. Native from here, graduated from Cootenay School. Live on the hero. Fully aware of. The city and the changes and everything that's going on. There's been, there's been a lot. But. Through doing this and working with people. What we are trying to do here is meet all the codes. Everything that everyone needs, make a better subdivision to people. This is not in our our full intent and with the engineering is not to have all of that. Not to have all that stuff. We hired a local engineering firm that's known you're used to work with the city of Sandpoint. He's here to design that stuff. You know, my my hope is that here we can move on and and go to returning all this in, having to leave. All the conditions. Because we don't get a final product out of conditions. And then we put all this money out there. And if we don't meet the final conditions, then it's sitting there and we don't get a. We're not here to hide and not here to work around and here to go through the process. That's stated in code. That puts something in that will work. The the water in the sewer. We've worked with the city of Sandpoint. They have a firm that they hired out of Spokane. It's not a firm we did that they run a water model. We pay to have a water model ready. And when we tie the loop in that goes down two hundred background into seven systems, it actually increases water. You know, I I would be glad to take a different look at maybe a breakaway gate so that if there is something instead of someone having to have a key, something someone can drive. I'm I'm open to things, open to suggestions. We're here to work with, not against. You know, there were some things that were said. We asked for a recording from the CD Cootenay. There were scenes that were said that I'll just go to the county and they'll rubber stamp it. That was never said. That's not true. I know that's not the way the system works. I know that's not people that are up there. So. What what we're here to do is to try to follow any ordinance you guys have. The fees that we pay. The infrastructure we put in, we have paid for the infrastructure and for the water and sewer, the waters two districts don't run those pipes, get developed and have to run them. So we pay to run these pipes. Once they're in, we we have also have to pay the hookups. So that's a big chunk of money going to those guys. And then there's a monthly fee, just like you guys pay. So what we're doing is no different than what the rest of people have done. There's hookup fees, there's new use of fees, there's monthly fees. We're not asking for anything different than anyone else who has been before. We're 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 asking that the commission. Sends this on. For the commissioners to look at. With the conditions. That we follow all ordinances and votes. We're gonna have to follow that with ITD, DEQ, e- everyone who's involved, we have to follow that with all of them. This property out there has been zoned this way since nineteen seventy eight. That has not changed. There there is drainage issues through all of. Pondure, that whole area. It comes down to designing a system that'll work. So, you know, we we're we're not opposed to. Anything that's suggested from like ITV. They say this is what's warned. We're up. We say, okay. We don't get a pit what they think is going. They're the traffic study. And then we follow. What's suggested and we do that. We're not asking for anything different than anyone else who's been a boarder. Any other developer, any other.
And those aren't just suggestions. That's a requirement for my TV like what they say, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm seeing rope and these requirements, suggestions, you know, for for any of these agencies that have professionals. That are working for them, working off of codes, numbers, calculations, not opinions, wants, emissions. It's. You know, it's it's the way this is set up for this process. We're here to work with you guys. So, you know, I I I think there's simple solutions, you know, if there's someone that I've received a breakaway gate. Rather than a lock. We 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 have full access. You don't want to push that. We don't want to fight. It's like, okay, well, we'll just go over here. This subdivision, seven systems, original multi phases. And this is another phase. It was designed to have another phase of it. It tied in. That's why that easement is written that way, so that we can type into those roads, into those water sewer systems. And and I'm sorry if people didn't understand that when they bought their lots, but it's still designed. Our subdivision has also been designed to work with the next people who. Because as everyone who moved here knows, it's a nice area to people move to. There's going to be more people moving here. There's going to be more subdivision. There's one way to avoid a place you don't like. If you don't like the traffic on the four oh five that was mentioned earlier, you move out of there, right? It's a nice area. People are going to come. So. This is going to be designed to work with what's there with the code, with the ordinances. We we want to work with everybody on. So. You know, some of the code stuff that was brought up, I had some notes on some of this, but there was no sense in in retouching on some of that stuff. It just be rehashing and thinking more if you guys.
Thank you.
So I hope you look at it and move it on based on conditions.
Thanks, Mike.
It's late, so I'll just be very brief, but if you have questions, I'll answer it. As far as the wetlands goes, the Army Corps of Engineers already has those. Waters of the United States marked on their the eighteen ninety five rivers and harbors law. They are already required. The only question is, is the water that accumulates in the property adjacent to those waters. We're not asking for anything special, just to be treated like any other private property owner who has gone through the requirements of the law. And to agree that we have done everything the law requires. And now it's for the expert agencies to let us know if there's any specialized requirement of the property. That we need to comply with so that we may do so before our final plats right there.
Thank you. Does applicant have any other input? Okay, so we will move now to commissioners deliberating.
Deliberate. As Jake would say.
So I guess talking on the the key points here, stormwater example, I mean, yeah, all pond array Cootenay and the city of Sandpoint were built on these same soil types. You know, the requirements for stormwater plan with all the calculations by a professional engineer. So, you know, once they get to that point, that's a requirement. It's already there.
I think the the thing that I see in a development like this for maybe years past or things would be. Like the Seven Sisters subdivision has a true concern that everything would shed down to them and and. As it runs to the lake, you know, it would would end up flooding their area even worse. I think my. You know, it it's not, it's not on me to to be that stormwater planner, but it does look like they had some engineering to protect all the neighbors. So it all runs internally. For me, that when I saw those those arrows and the flow of that, how great was it going to be done? And if that's what, you know, they've submitted, that's me, that is what they submitted, you know. That looks good, you know. What page is that on?
Oh, I don't know. It's in no way. It's on fourteen.
Yeah, that's a that's a good plan there in terms of like wanting to see it not affect the neighbors. That that would be like. Something that, you know, that makes me happy to see, you know, we see a developer do that. I think in the county. Traditionally, in the county, we don't see a lot of subdivisions like this small with this smaller parcels. It's not too many are next to city services. Not too many are have sewer and water. Yeah, and and you, you know, a lot of times it's like, oh, I'm building here. All this is going to run down to you. Yeah, yeah, or four, even on five acre parcels, you know, you you don't see that kind of consideration, but it's. Anyway, so that helped, you know, just made me a little more. Ha- happier to see on the on the plans, but as a as it all is said. I'd like to hear a little more from this gentleman that hair out there. Right?
Well, I, you know, you know, I have a degree in civil engineering and I I understand stormwater management and, you know. And in like, like Swat said, this is, this is a preliminary plat. They've got a, they have a plan and.
Now they have to prove they can do it.
Not approved until it's approved. So I really have an issue that, I mean, a personal issue, I I hate to see a wetland disappear. From Bonner County. Even if it's not contiguous to a lake or a river. You know, all those photographs that we saw tonight with that standing water in their their chest holes that they made in August. And they, they're full of water. So that tells you a lot. I mean, I don't know. The company that didn't test on what they feel about that, but. I mean, how many times have you driven by? Pondure and Cootenay especially.
You just look.
In the spring of the year, it looks like.
Go past Lignetics and look at that development. There, you know, they're on the right hand side. It's a lake in July.
My main concern is the safety of the community. And I think the way the subdivision is laid out without it. It got this gated emergency access. It doesn't cover for me because. They need to have a permanent two ways to get out.
I think they have to have that.
I think they.
No, no, I think that's part of the part of the requirements is they, yeah, they they have to have that. So that's that's something that they have to have. condo del Sol is the same problem. I don't know if you've been there. They have a, they have a, they have a lock. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And Sandpoint Furniture, you know, there's, there's a lot of these issues of the similar, similar things with drives that are, you know, kind of blocked. And then you have emergency service keys there.
And, you know, the other big victory that kind of rubs me wrong, this whole idea of the subdivision is the fact that. They didn't. Annex to. You know, they're going to increase the population by one third. And. I think there maybe there maybe, I can't think for them. It seems to me that they, this was an easier route to go around thinking. County would be easier to. Get things bad, rubber stand.
I don't believe that. No, no. Yeah, I take that offensive really.
Well, what do you guys think about?
I mean, there's certainly different rules between different. The cities of Cootenay is different than the city of Sandpoint, which is different than Bonner County, which is different.
If I'm doing a development in the in Bonner County, I I prefer to develop in Bonner County than the city of Sandpoint, just due to the other stuff.
Yeah. So I mean, that that's an election. I mean, if Cootenay County, or the city of Cootenay, not Cootenay County. You know, really feels this parcel belongs in the city. I mean, they can wheel and deal on that too. What's between them or should have a city? Yeah, or should have. I I guess one thing I I guess is a question for staff, but a hundred and seventeen lots just seems. Like a pretty major development for the county. Like you said, we don't usually often deal and. You know, this number of lots or this small of size. So I I guess I'm. It just seems to me there there might be other particular requirements that wouldn't really apply on five lots or ten lots or twenty lots. But suddenly a hundred and seventeen lots kicks in. I mean, are there certain? I mean, I guess road requirements, obviously, but I don't know what else.
Basically, everything over four lots, five over anything is just goes through a rigorous.
So there's nothing extra for a hundred as opposed to twenty.
Okay, twenty, a hundred, a thousand.
Anything over four is the same. Okay.
All road provisions and services, water and sewer will have to be provided. While the subdivision.
Yeah, for the minimum. Our success. Okay.
Well, I'm still, I'm still stuck on the safety part of it as well and mostly. The egress in the evening is a little worrisome. You know, Roden Bridge would prefer a right away. Seven Sisters, but I understand people's, you know, concerns about that and it's the city's choice too. That's fine. For me, it's a sequencing. And sort of looking at information in isolation that that bothers me about the traffic studies. So we have a traffic study at. Under a. And upon a point and Seven Sisters, no, no data from these folks.
So they've had a traffic study.
Yeah, yeah, they've they've had their own traffic study looked at through. This other traffic study there is back quite a few years ago, was not approved, was. They didn't, they didn't suggest a light. And so.
I think that was last year.
Yeah, but it's old information. It's not, it's not new information, but. It it doesn't matter. It's sort of the sequencing. What you need is both of them together in the study. And I know that's coming up. I think that was coming out. And it just. I'm just worried we're. We're kind of putting this process ahead of that process. That that's that's my my main concern. That we're not really going to get a look at how safe can we make this area because it is, it's going to be a lot more hard. We're, you have your study. I thought your study was very well done. I'm not trying to disparage it at all. And the older information I got here in twenty nineteen, I'm not a. But I do use the area a lot. I do a lot hiking. I go through that area a lot. And it's. Most since the pandemic, I don't know. Since the pandemic, it's the traffic during the both in the morning and. And this will add to it. I'm not saying. How much? It's what the experts tell us that. I just would like to see that done. In in a comprehensive way, and it sounds like that's going to. After we rule.
Yeah, but this is just a.
Approval of. I I get, yeah, and the commissioners will look at this as well. There's all kinds of things that happen.
Jacob.
So just as a procedural moving forward is kind of where I'm seeing you guys are headed. Any motion you make that is a tie vote is a is just a denial of the motion, right? So if you guys can't make a majority motion to one way or the other. You won't be able to make any recommendations before. But that's what that's what's required of this meeting is that you guys come to a majority vote. To make a motion to go to the board, right? We will make the final ruling on this specific. to make a motion to go to the board, right? We will make the final ruling on this specific file. But I got ahold of our chairman, Mr. Marble, and he's back in town on Sunday and he can meet any night, any night next week. So one option we have, and he said he can watch this entire video, get caught up to date on where we're at, he's already read all public comments. So, um, we could continue this hearing, um, assuming you guys can't get to a majority.
You know what happens when you assume, Jake?
Right.
Doesn't happen to him.
Sure, uh, so we could, we could continue this to some night next week. In just the deliberation stage, we don't have to open it back for public comment to resume your deliberation and make a decision with the fifth person to break the private. Just as an option for your consideration.
So let's see if we can make, make a deal here. So the stormwater and the soils and so, seems like we've kind of settled that. Um, the main thing appears to be the highway two hundred stuff. I mean, can we make some sort of motion where we recommend that staff and the, uh, the Board of County Commissioners I guess seriously consider that or?
It's a better question for.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
I think they have to do a traffic, you know, it has to happen.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna do ITD's job for them, but rather they do their job.
Like, they, they have to do that.
What, one option you have is requiring additional information, so you can continue this contingent on, if you don't have enough information to make a decision tonight, if there's a concern about the traffic impact study, you want a more thorough analysis or something along those lines. Um, you can continue this pending that, right? If you want staff to reach out to a specific agency and ask for a more, a more robust comment, you can continue to request that of staff. Um, you could make a motion for approval, a recommendation of approval denial and also recommend, uh, in that, that the applicants seek out additional information and bring it to the board. So, um, you have some options ahead of you.
Okay. So I think we've already decided this preliminary data and we understand preliminary data and final data is different. And we can't, you know, do endless research or expect anyone to do endless research. You, you know, ultimately, I don't even know if the county commissioners can say that, you know, I, they have to build a stoplight or whatever, like I can't build a stop.
We have, we have the.
Two hundred.
We have the, the reply, you know, from ITD, I think, you know, they, they're telling us what they, they feel is needed there, right? I, I'm sure, I'm sure that they, they know what their left hand's doing, the right hand kind of knows what their left hand's doing there, I'm thinking, right? Like they, they're doing, like, I'm not gonna, it's not my job to manage it. Right, like I can't, I know, and I, and I can't hold take something from somebody else's property rights because they have a letter from the expert saying all they need is a term. I think we're moving towards a way where the people that are so concerned about safety are gonna end up with a lot of traffic through their neighborhood for their second entry. That's my thought. So sometimes the devil you're worried about becomes the thing that you didn't want. And that's the reality, I think, with that, whether it's the city annexing it or whatever.
They'll be in him.
Yeah.
They will.
Yeah.
Can you mitigate it much of this?
It was designed to be that way from the beginning and there's phases, several phases of that seven sister. There's gonna be commercial upfront, right? And you know that, I mean, like being here, we know how that whole plan is set up. You know, are you gonna? Way it is.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, as, as far as where I'm at, we can see, do here, but I mean, I guess I would encourage the applicant to think about sidewalks and open space, maybe more than they have.
I agree with that.
I would encourage them. Um, I would encourage the engineer to, you know, double and triple check that the water isn't gonna run into Seven Sisters, um, in the stormwater management plan. Um, and then, yeah, definitely make sure that, you know, the trip generation report and working with ITD. Um, I think all of those items are, would be encouraged and that would be a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to think hard about those issues and encourage them.
Jake, did the county commissioners have the ability to put, they can put, can, like, additional requirements on the developer too, correct?
Right, you can recommend additional conditions of approval and the board also has the same, okay, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
You could, it also could be just like, uh, staff, we recommend our list, just like Swati changed the one.
Right, we can do.
She mentioned earlier where the lot design now matches our code. So the board is, uh, between now and the board's hearing, if they address some other conditions, we can present out to the board and say, okay, condition this, you know, they've already met that. So we recommend that we strike, so, same idea, so you guys could recommend additional, they can modify or recommend.
Are we gonna end up?
I have one other thing I want to discuss, I mean, I'm sure you guys have looked at, you know, regards to whether we improve or deny to the conclusions of law, you know, the whole list of will or will not and so forth, and the last one's conclusion, a proposed subdivision is or is not in accordance with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. So I did a little reading up on the comprehensive plan and this is a chapter four, talking about the authority purpose and intent. And, uh, it says, um, the second paragraph says the zoning subdivision and other land use standards and procedures were established in accordance with the comprehensive plan and Idaho code for the potent purpose of promoting health, safety, morals, and the general welfare of Bonner County. It's nice. Uh, then they say they have been designed to lessen the congestion in the streets to secure from fire, panic, and other dangers. Provide adequate light and air, prevent the overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration in population, and facilitate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public environments. It goes on and on, but I, I, I just feel that this subdivision doesn't meet a lot of those requirements.
Due to the, the gated access for fire, is that your main, one of the main tanks?
That's one, that's one of the main.
And then the highway.
But it's, the gated access to fire, I mean, that's, that's a past street type scenario that could happen.
Right.
But, you know, there's also, you know, um, a third of the population, Cootenay's gonna be in the subdivision. And how do the kids get to school? Are they gonna walk down on highway two hundred?
That's the best way to get across, like you, you take your passenger, you see, get out and push that light and cross log and then you can turn left.
Yeah, but there is no light.
So, no, no, the cross, I'm just being facetious. When you're trying to get out, that's your savior there.
You know, I, I would be hard pressed to put my name on that conclusion that it's in accordance with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. The way that that's stated.
Well, I think that the way it's stated is not for everybody else around, it's, 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 does it, is it safe for the, is the development safe?
Well, I'm saying it's not.
I got you.
Commissioners, I, I would like to point out that part of the code, Bonner County Revised Code, which says the purpose of the subdivision chapter is to establish subdivision and land division standards that are consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, which means the, the chapter has been designed to be compatible with the comprehensive plan. The standards of the subdivision chapter, that is, that the project has been reviewed against.
True. What are you guys' thoughts? Do we want to send it up for my commendation and what are you thinking? No, over here, you think it's unsafe, right? I would just find, I mean, I agree, I see where you're coming from.
I would like to hear if, if there's a motion gonna be made for some of these additional.
Right, I think, I like those, I like those recommendations.
A motion seconded and then have a little discussion.
All right, well, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna make it. I guess, a, a conceptual without going through the will or will not.
Sure.
Uh, and this technically does have two exits on, onto a county road, onto Providence Road. Which, I mean, not all developments happen to be close to a state highway, you know, so if this was three miles up the road, we'd say it did have two exits. Um, but, okay, uh, so I guess we would encourage, uh, the applicant to think hard about sidewalks and development of this size. Um, we would encourage the applicant to, uh, have strong consideration of Seven Sisters and the Stormwater Management Plan. And we would encourage the applicant to do a thoughtful trip generation analysis on highway two hundred.
And I think there will be recommendations to the county commissioner, or like, that's the way we encourage, yeah, recommendations.
Yeah. Jake, is that?
With those recommendations.
If we can recommend additional conditions of approval on the application, I would make them, so you, one way you could do this is line out, so adding condition. And then list this, uh, as you stated, right? I would. Words like encourage are super binding, right?
Sure.
Um, you can encourage them to think about it and consider it, but a requirement is a lot easier for staff to, to dictate later. We don't.
Right.
Gray area for staff is less definable, right? So if you encourage them, then we can ask them, did you, were you encouraged? And they said, yes. They decided not to. So if you, if, if, if you're leaning towards that should be a requirement, then make it a requirement. And if the board disagrees with you, then they'll take that condition out, right?
Okay. Okay, yeah, I mean, what we do isn't binding tonight, so I guess I would say we put that in the thing for the board and then the board can think really hard about it, cause what they say is binding and they can say, no, that's, you know, that, those aren't the rules and that's over the top, but.
So we would add those to the fourteen conditions of approval that are already there, I think it's fourteen, might be, yeah, fourteen. We'd have fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, probably.
No.
Okay. And. Yeah.
Calculations, are you adding more conditions?
Yes, yes.
So before you add those conditions about, uh, ITD, I would, I would like to request you to review condition number six.
It basically says the same thing.
Yeah. Which basically says that all the improvements that have been required by, uh, Idaho Transportation Department will be completed before the plan gets recorded. And they will have to, like, provide us a letter from Idaho Transportation Department saying that, that those conditions have been met somewhere or the other, so unless that happens, the project is not gonna move forward.
Okay.
But, but, well, respectfully, that's not what I was asking for. I mean, I understand, they did a traffic study and ITD said, well, turn lane and they didn't do a traffic study that included both the intersection adjacent to it and their proposed the intersection that they're gonna add trap to, that's what I'm looking for. Now, ITD is going to do that. We wanna ask these guys to do that.
I think that's part of the process that ITD has looked at when in doing their, their, you know, I'm, this is, I I would have a hard, I would have a hard time believing that they would, you know, look at an application and not know a foot, you know, a hundred feet down the road. You know what the traffic count is there based on.
An old, an old traffic count that said, don't put a light in.
Well, we get it, you know, like.
I'm looking for a revised traffic.
We can't tell ITD.
I, I understand, I, I get it, it's just, that's, that's what this is about, it's about, this is real, it's about safety.
Yeah, but we have to operate within our restrictions of the law, what we can deal, we can't tell.
I just wanna make sure when, when, if we say yea or nay to this, that it's clear that one of the things we would have wanted, would have liked to seen, you know, perfect world was that.
Yeah.
However, we can make a motion to do that.
Is there a way to do that? Jake, tell ITD what to do. Yeah, I know, but that's what we would like.
Perfect world, yeah.
So, like I said, we have a jurisdiction over Idaho Transportation Department's highways. And even if we ask them, we can ask them, we can condition the approval on the fact that they give us a more detailed uh, traffic impact study, but if ITD refuses to use that study for their, for what improvements they need to make, then that study is no use to us or anybody. Because it really is up to ITD as to what they want for.
I just, I just think that needs to be done before you move ahead with whatever, internally and anything.
Sure.
If there's a light there, that impacts what they, wouldn't it? There was a light there. That's all I'm saying.
I think they're, I, I, well, I've understood that ITD is they highly dislike putting. Yeah.
I live in San.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, really slow.
Yeah, it's, it's like.
They wanna move traffic.
Yes, yeah. And like the person said.
I watched what happened to us in the world.
Yeah.
Can't believe we have a lot. And it has greatly.
Yeah, but they're just so slow.
One hundred percent.
Yeah. I lived there. So, I think, you know, that we put it on record very well that we would have really appreciate a, a better survey from ITD, we can't require it from them.
Right.
I wish we could, you know, look, I'm hoping that this is my gut, their experts are what they do, they probably know that the left hand over here is the most, they probably know, like, it really needs a light over here. But we're not gonna do that, yeah. I don't, but I don't know that for sure either, you know, I hate to tell that.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Commissioners, if you would like, we, the staff, like Jake said, staff can reach out to ITD um, after tonight and ask them for a more detailed comment relating to your comments.
That's perfect.
And then you can continue my hearing. The next time that we get a.
I'm good with that.
More, uh, detailed comment from them, we can't promise that we need a detailed comment, but we'll definitely reach out to them and ask them.
Sorry, we can't take any more public comment.
I'm just gonna say that new evidence will require a new hearing of new public comment section. I'm just mentioning that. So adding additional products might upset.
Yeah, I mean, so what we do, I mean, we're, our goal here is we are stamping this thing and it's going through. We're just trying to help the commissioners out and sort through some of the issues. So the commissioners have a big thing to deal with, we consolidate that down to the three points. So if we can relate to the commissioners that we think it's good contingent on, you guys really need to think hard about ITD. And before the commissioners meeting, not our meeting, but the commissioners meeting, they can get some more info. I mean, I guess I would like to just do that and then the commissioners have everything in front of them and we've kind of already dealt, filtered all this stuff down. And how's that?
Yeah, if we can get ITD to give some more dominance on it, a little more detail, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I really, I mean, to back up one step, I'm, I'm I have almost no prob, problems at all with the rest of what these folks have given us in their application.
Yeah. So can we make a motion that we would like to approve it, um, subject to at the next meeting they have? You guys have talked to ITD a little bit more.
What you do is, um, if you have any other conditions, you would recommend, um, adding condition, this, this, and this, right? Then you would also, um, direct staff to communicate with ITD and request an additional um, comments or more enhanced comment given the discussion tonight, um, and present that to the board with your, uh, recommendation. You can say so moved the staff.
So I guess we just move to approve and then the only thing is we direct staff at the end, that's the way to do it, so. Okay. And what am I reading this?
Yeah, um. Commissioner Webster would make a motion to recommend approval, I move to recommend the, to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the project file S zero 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 two dash two three Providence subdivision, requesting the creation of a hundred and sixteen residential lots and progress cement the thirty nine point five seven acres property zone suburban and located in section one township fifty seven north range two west Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Bonner County, Idaho, finding that it is in accord with the Bonner County Revised Code based on the following conclusions of law. Scroll down to the conclusions of law. The proposed subdivision is in accord with the proposed, uh, purposes of this title in the zoning district which is located. The site is physically suitable for the proposed development. The design of the purpose subdivision will not adversely impact Bonner County's natural resources as identified in the comprehensive planning and at first, any adverse impacts or potential impacts shall be mitigated with the condition of approval. The public and private services, including but not limited to water sewer. Services, solid waste, fire protection, emergency services, school. Facilities and transportation which will serve the purpose subdivision are adequate for the needs for future residents. Or users, the proposed subdivision will not cause circumstances that exist that will cost. Future residents of the, or the public at large should be exposed to hazards to health or safety. The design of the proposed subdivision related improvements will. Provide for, uh, coordinated access with the county systems, road and adjacent properties and will not impede the use of public easements for access to. Through or the proposed subdivision. The proposed transportation system is designed. To adequately and safely serve the future residents, users without adversely impacting the existing transportation system by reducing the quality or level of service or creating hazards or congestions. The proposed subdivision is designed to comply with the design criteria subdivision set forth in chapter six point two of this chapter. The proposed subdivision is in a. Accord with Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Um, the conditions of approval, um, as noted by staff and. Uh, requirements of. The sidewalks are already in there, uh, requirements, uh, sidewalks and. Can requirements, uh. Seven Sisters Stormwater, uh, review that it's flowing in, that the stormwater from the subdivision flows inward and not, uh, to the adjacent properties. Yes.
What do you mean by the requirement sidewalks?
Well.
What, what would be like?
I would like to clarify there like, uh, that they would. That the. Development does include the five foot. Paved, uh, pathways or sidewalks that are throughout the, the subdivision. As, as. Put on the plan. So I think, I don't know why. All right, um, and now, uh, the recommendation. Is based on the evidence submitted up to the time a staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing and further move to adopt the findings of fact that set forth in the staff report or is amended during this hearing. And direct the planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this recommendation and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in the taking of private property. The action that could be take. The action that could be taken to obtain the approval of preliminary flat is to complete the conditions of approval as recommended. All right, commissioners, um, will now invoke from our, do we have a second?
Second, the discussion.
Okay, yeah, so sure, do we have a second?
I second that motion. Commissioner Wymer.
All right, oh, we have a second, shall we discuss the motion? I get it.
I'm, I'm good, I'm good with, I'm good with it now that you've got. My main concern about. Just misalignment and timing of the two different traffic studies. Now it creates. Creates an issue where it looks like things are being, are approved. Need to be looked at more for it, as long as that is transmitted to the officials. That's where I'm at, yeah, I mean, we don't need to do ITD's job for him, um, as long as the commissioners are aware of that being a key point.
You add in the, to your motion to direct staff to contact.
Um, I did not.
So you're gonna either amend, amend, or we can do it as a second point.
Okay. Like to amend my previous motion to include staff to contact ITV for any additional information or traffic studies on the area. And present it to the board. Yeah, that's what I meant to say. Thank you.
I second that, I'm gonna confirm that amendment.
All right, um, we have a motion, uh, let's see, uh, the commission. Uh, will now vote from my left, please.
Commissioner Wymer in favor?
Commissioner Webster, I.
Mr. Clark, I. Mr. Wickling, they.
The motion carries, um, with three voting in favor and one voting against. Staff update, does the staff. Come on now. Yeah, 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 we'll take a five minute recess.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Have a good night. You ready?
Yeah.
All right, we're re-adjourned, thanks. Let's get us to bed. Yeah, all right.
Get staff out of here.
Yeah.
You can see why the hearing examiner, uh, sent this to you guys. So she actually, she has the option of making a recommendation for approval or denial that instead, or, or just a neutral, right? We just recommend you guys hold it here, so. She had a hearing on this last month. Yeah, I want to say last month.
Obamacareian assault.
Yeah, okay. A lot of the same showed up, the same attorney showed up, presented all similar information, right? And she decided. They should go to the zoning.
Public enemy number one over there.
It'll go to the board, um, and we'll probably hear. Probably sit through another three and a half, four hour meeting and. We'll see what happens there, so, um, we'll go, we'll do, and that's, this is a good example of. You know, kind of a give and take, right? Um, in your deliberation, so. Uh, we will definitely reach out, we'll follow that, um, the, uh. Not recommendation, but mandate, if you want to call it that, from zoning commission, we, like, I tell the, the chair this often, like, we work for you guys, right? So if there's a lack of information, you can always request staff or the applicant. To find that app, find that information and bring it back to you guys or send it to the board with that information, so.
Yeah, I was thinking that I should have said something sooner about that before we met, but.
Yeah, that's okay.
I could have talked to him, he'd be myself.
So Bob also received a number of emails from members of the public. I, I can't stop people from sending you guys emails. Again, if you get, especially if it's addressed just to you, please forward those to staff, we'll add it to the record so that, yeah, um, everybody has the same information, so.
I just don't check my email.
Oh. Different problem there.
Addressed to you.
As far as the, the department goes, um. Let's see. There's not a whole lot of changes, uh, we're going through our budget season right now, um, we're working on. Some minor code amendments that really don't affect your guys' um, any zone changes or whatnot, some. Uh, minor kind of ministerial style changes. The board did approve a number of small changes to title twelve. The last one or month before. Yeah, so one, one change was the. The zone change requirements, site plan requirements, so they got rid of a list of different requirements that were essentially a copy paste from the CP code, so. You'll see some changes in the applications for zone changes where they're not gonna, yeah, anyway, so. Some of that, um.
You emailed us that.
I did, yeah.
Yeah, what's the concise summary of that again? It's a more detailed thing in the zone change?
Less, less detailed.
Less detailed.
Yeah, so essentially the site plan requirements were a copy paste from the CUP code.
Okay.
Which does require more detail, right? Because you're talking a specific use or zoning, you're talking about a broad range of uses, so. That, that was the rationale behind getting rid of that. It was a recommendation for Google Calendar too, so.
Okay.
Um. We are seeing a little bit of a slowdown, um, in applications, but we just got a whole handful of them, half dozen or so in the last week, so. Some more modifications. We're seeing a lot less hearing files, um, especially those going to the board. So less zone changes, less complaint map amendments, but we just had a map amendment on Tuesday, so the planning commission, um. Updated the housing components and, which had a lot of really good findings in it, so if you haven't read that. Just know, like, all of our complaint components are getting smaller, so the read is a lot easier. I think our natural resources went from two hundred and thirty or so pages, their current draft is about twenty four pages. So they're, they're getting more condensed and specific. The, the zoning commissions mantra is, is how does this apply to land use, right? So, uh, they're, they're cutting out a lot of the fluff that was in there before that was, uh, given by. Outside contractors, J U B and other, uh, engineering firms that put a lot of these together back. Um, in two thousand and five, two thousand and six, so they're cutting out a lot and, and just. Putting specifics to how does, how does this impact land, so. Um, they're currently work on natural resources, I think we're gonna go to the public with that in a hearing in October. They're gonna continue working on it and they just took a look at and started on, um, public services, so. But the housing component, I would recommend if you have some time, if any one of the ones you're gonna read, I would spend some time reading that because. It's very telling is the lack of. Lack of income for the people who live here, the price of homes and the disparity between the group. Uh, you see that the majority of the folks, even though we're here tonight, like, they're not the working class. So it, and that is kind of telling, it's that, it shows it in the numbers in our housing component. Those that. That are of the working class can't afford to live here, so, um, there's a, there's definitely a need for housing and I think. This subdivision, although it might be, might, might not be a perfect, um, it's very much needed in the community, right? We need more homes.
Yeah.
You, you can't decrease the price of homes while decreasing the volume of someone, right? The whole disparity between supply and demand and price, so, um, any other questions for me?
Yeah, when does that planning commission staff? Get set in stone, like Zach can get set in stone next fall or like weeks from now?
So they are approving, uh.
As they go.
Each component as they go, so each component's its own file.
Okay.
Um, some of them are lumped with a couple of files, but each one of those, if you look on our homepage, it says complaint update. There's a list of the different versions and it'll say current adopted. And we see a date within the last. Twelve months, nine, or, yeah, it's about twelve months now. I think they started approving them back in November. We had some components approved. And then just the current drafts of each one, um.
Eventually.
Should be on it.
That becomes a GIS file, but when's the GIS file or the? Or the.
The map, you mean?
Yeah. The layer, when's that?
Right, so the first, the first step, the big step is getting through all the text, right? So their housing. Was a big one, natural resource is the next. Big one, and they're almost done with that, um, it should be adopted or go to the board at least by November. And then public services is the next large one. So, and then after that is the land use component, which is the compilation of all of it. That shouldn't take too long because they're fresh in the mind of all the other proponents they just did. Um, there'll be some discussion as to what their complaint designation, like map designation should be. And then that, that text will lead to the changes in the, in the comp on that. Which will then lead to changes in those other.
So, so we'll go ahead. Yeah, so right now, if I'm looking at, you know, this section, it's half twenties and half tens.
Yep.
Next year, it could be this corner is fives and over here is twenties because that's the mountainside and this is.
Yeah, so we have a lot more GIS and slope layer tools, um, than when they first made these maps, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of squares before.
Yeah, yeah. So I've been working with GIS to update our PLSS layer so that the section lines line up, the zoning lines would line up with. Um, ours is a bunch of data that's been conglomerated over time, so we, we have a lot more unique. Mapping issues than other counties do. I asked other counties, how do you deal with split zone properties? And they're like. Every now and again, I've been here for six years and I've gotten like one or two, I'm like, oh, okay. There's a lot of splits on property throughout our county and it seems to be a unique problem to us, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if we can at least. Try to. I wouldn't say fix it all, but. Try to come up with some solution to it, right? So.
Um, so, so is this trails plan that was referenced, is that dead or is it still being worked on or?
My assumption is that when they crafted this code, they were working on some trail.
Oh, they were.
And.
Yeah, it hurts.
It's never been adopted, um, I know there was another. Probably large, county wide trail plan that was considered and. The, the commissioners just killed it.
Yeah, right.
Um, what was that called operation? If I remember right, it proposed a lot of trail.